Good morning, everyone. We're actually starting on time for a change here. So we're glad to have you here this morning. I'd like to welcome you. My name is Mike Terry. I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission and we are a group appointed by the Board of Commissioners to examine and investigate every request that comes to the county for rezoning or for a land use permit. And so that's what we will do. We will investigate these cases this morning in the hearing and then we'll make a recommendation which we'll forward on to the Board of Commissioners. All the final and binding decisions are made by them at their hearing, which will occur in a couple of weeks, and that is on May the 16th. So if you're here today for any of these cases, you will need to come back on the 16th in this chamber so that your case can be heard then. It's our custom to invite various members of the local clergy to open our meeting with appropriate comments or a prayer. And it's my pleasure this morning to introduce to you Father Peter McCabe from the Episcopal Church on Jamerson Road. So Father, if you want to come on up while he's coming, I will remind you that after his comments, we'll have a pledge of allegiance led by Officer Ott from Cobb County Police Department. When you see him come forward, please stand if you're able and we'll have our pledge of allegiance. Welcome, Father.
Thank you. Bless us, pray. Well, Lord, our governor, bless the leaders of our land that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to other nations of the earth, to the president and members of the cabinet, to governors of states, mayors of cities, and to all administrative authority. Grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of their duties. To senators and representatives and those who make our laws in the states, cities, and towns for our Cobb County Commission for this zoning hearing. Give courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the needs of all our people and to fulfill our obligations in the community of nations. To the judges and officers of our courts, give understanding and integrity that human rights may be safeguarded and justice served. And finally, teach our people to rely on your strength, to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may elect trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, that we may serve you faithfully in our generation and honor your holy name. For yours is the kingdom, oh Lord, and you are exalted as head above all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you very much, gentlemen. First on our agenda this morning will be our consent agenda. These are cases that the Planning Commission and the zoning staff have fully investigated and were all satisfied that all the pertinent issues have been resolved and for which there is no known opposition. The zoning administrator, Mr. John Peterson, this is John raising his hand to my left, will read the cases into the record and he'll ask if there's anyone here in opposition to or wishing to speak to these particular cases. If there is, we may elect to pull it from the consent agenda and in which case it would be heard in its regular numerical sequence. Next, we will hear any held or continued cases from a previous hearing. And then lastly, we'll get into our regular cases again, heard in their numerical sequence. Applicants will be asked to come forward and identify themselves, to be sworn in if necessary to present their case. Then the opposition likewise will be asked to identify themselves, be counted for the record, and be sworn in. When you hear your case number being called, you need to present yourself to our officer of the day, Jason, on the front row. Raise your hand there, Jason Campbell. Jason will take care of swearing in anyone that needs that. He'll also ask you to sign a book that he has so that we get the correct spelling of your name, so be sure you see him. Please be aware that comments, this is very important, we miss this a lot of times, but the comments are limited to 10 minutes collectively. That's not 10 minutes per person, that's 10 minutes for each case. And that's for both the opposition and for the applicant. So be mindful of the length of your comments so that we can hear as many cases as possible and as many comments on those cases as possible. When you come forward to make your comments, that is not a time for rebuttal. It's your time to just present your case to us. We're not going to answer questions at that point. However, we might call you back up to clarify an issue or to answer a specific question for us. So that's our procedure. And with that, Mr. Peterson, are you ready to go this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are a few announcements we need to make before we start the hearing.
Okay.
There's one case on today's agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice, will not be heard today. It's rezoning case C-113 of 2016, Habitat for Humanity of Northwest Metro Atlanta Incorporated. That case has been withdrawn or not be heard. There are a number of cases on today's agenda which have been continued also, will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-18 of 2016, Hope Land Enterprises Incorporated. The case was continued by the staff until the June 6, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-18 of 2016 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-9 of 2017, Parent Homes. That case was continued by the staff until the June 6, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-9 of 2017 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-12 of 2017, SSP Blue Ridge LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the June 6, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-12 of 2017 will not be heard today. Mr. Chairman, Board, there is one case on today's printed agenda which the Planning Commission probably needs to continue. That's rezoning case Z-19 of 2017, Clarence Clay. Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. And Mr. Chairman, Board, I believe the applicant needs to continue this to work on his site plan some more.
I believe that is the case. Don't you have a comment on that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I do support continuing it. The applicant, we realized that the applicant didn't have enough parking on his site, but he owns adjoining land, so he's going to need to add some adjoining land into his application. With that, I just want to make sure we're clear that we need a parking plan that meets Cobb County standards drawn to scale by a professional, and we need a revised legal description. And I think if I'm correct, John, you need the revised legal by this Friday?
Yes, I need the legal and revised site plan and revised rezoning application by Friday.
Okay, in order to make the June hearing.
Correct.
Okay. So you want me to make a motion to continue that?
Since you have the floor, why don't you go ahead and make the motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we continue Z-19 until our June hearing.
Motion in a second to continue 19 along with these others, by the way. Motion second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote? I'm sorry. Okay, he's working. Okay, it's not working, so we'll do a hand show. All in favor? Okay, so Z-19 is added. Let me just review that really quick. I like to read this into the record. Today, if you're here for any of these cases, we will not be hearing these cases today. John, check me and be sure I got it right. Z-18, Z-19, Z-113 has been withdrawn, and Z-9 and Z-12. So those cases will not be heard today. I said Z-18.
2016.
Yeah, that's 2016. So those cases will not be heard today.
Okay. Yes, sir. I would like to ask people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please put it on silent mode. The ringing does interfere with broadcast presentations, so if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on it. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 or more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this is located on the table in the back of the room. I would like to also remind the people in today's audience, the zoning attorneys and people who are here to speak against zoning cases, that information is required to be submitted to the Planning Commission the Wednesday prior to this hearing date to be considered. Any information submitted late, it's up to the discretion of the Board if they want to consider your information. With that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready to start the consent agenda.
Let me reinforce that. We started getting a little stricter with that. If you have, if you're an applicant and you have a site plan, STIP letter, renderings, anything pertaining to your case, or if you're in opposition to a case and you have information that we need, we need to get it in a timely fashion. If we get it at the last minute, it's really not fair to the staff or to us. We don't have time to look at it then. We have 15 or 20, sometimes 30 cases every single hearing cycle, so we need that information to us Wednesday prior to the Tuesday hearing date, so please try to get that stuff to us so we have time to analyze it and we may need to call you back and talk about it. So if you'll do that, we appreciate it. Okay, John, we're ready to go.
Thank you. Cobb County Planning Commission's zoning hearing consent agenda for May 2, 2017. Rezoning case Z-14, Lloyd Development Services. Request rezoning from R-20 to R-15 O.C. for the purpose of a single-family residential subdivision in landlot 394 of the 17th District. The property is located on the northern terminus of Pebblebrook Lane on the northwest side of Pebblebrook Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the R-15 O.C. zoning district subject to the following conditions. Letters of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samuels, Jr., dated April 20, 2017, April 21, 2017, and May 1, 2017. Site plan dated March 27, 2017, with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications. District Commissioner to approve the final house architecture. Planning divisions, O.C. comments and recommendations. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. And stormwater management division comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-14? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-18, Lonnie D. Cox. Request rezoning from G.C. to N.R.C. for the purpose of automotive repair in landlot 60 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Canton Road north of Jamerson Road. Staff recommends approval to the N.R.C. zoning district subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on February 13, 2017, with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications. Variance as mentioned in the zoning comments. Repair work to be done inside the building. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication assistance improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. No outdoor storage or display of merchandise and adherence to the Canton Road Design Guidelines. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-18? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-20, Teaching Little Children Incorporated. Request rezoning from G.C. to N.R.C. for the purpose of neighborhood retail uses in landlot 85 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Ecton Drive west of Canton Road. Staff recommends approval to the N.R.C. zoning district subject to the following conditions. Revised site plan received by the zoning division on March 6, 2017. Any attached traffic circulation and parking plan received April 5, 2017, with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications. Letter from Mr. James Bailey dated April 26, 2017. Variances mentioned in the zoning comments section. Fire department comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-20? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP-4 Sandy Cloe. Request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of an artist studio in landlot 336 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Trail Road west of Midway Road. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to no signs, no on-street parking, no outdoor storage, and two seasonal employees. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP-4? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP-6 Still Family Farm LLC. Request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of agritourism and a corn maze in landlot 439 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Macklin Road west of Florence Road. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the attached parking plan received by the zoning division on March 2, 2017. Statement of proposed elements received to March 2, 2017 by the zoning division for this applicant only, for the months of September, October, and November only. Stormwater management comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for LUP-6 Still Family Farm LLC? Is there anyone here opposed to this case? Mr. Chairman, there's no one opposed. We'll call the applicant, see if they can come in before the end of the hearing. So we'll pull that one off. LUP-8 Jessica Joyner. Request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of an in-home salon in landlot 270 of the 20th District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Evian Drive and Hadaway Road. Staff recommends approval for 24 months. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP-8? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Okay, just for clarification, we do have, and many of you have copies of our agenda out there this morning, there are two cases, both labeled as Z-18. I want to be sure we understand. One of those is a carryover from last year, so that's why we have a Z-18 from last year and a Z-18 for this year, because at the end of the year, we start the numbers over again. So just for clarification. Madam Clerk, did you, were you able to reach those folks? Okay, we're trying. So we'll pull that off the consent agenda and see if we can get to that in a little bit. Okay. Okay, well, we'll see if she doesn't show up. She may come in a little bit later, so then we'll handle that when she comes in. We do need to have her here, though. Okay, anything else, John? Go on.
I have a modification to Z-14.
Okay.
And that is, in the stipulation letter dated both April 20, 2017, and May 1, 2017, there's a stipulation number 15D, and that needs to be stricken from those two letters and replaced with the following. LDS agrees to verify that minimum intersection site distance is available at Pebblebrook Road and Pebblebrook Lane, and if it is not, implement remedial measures subject to Cobb DOT approval to achieve the minimum requirement of 335 feet. And that's it. And DOT has approved that, and I believe the applicant's good with that, too.
Okay, I agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay, you've discussed that with the applicant and, okay, so we're, okay, we're fine. Okay. Anything else, anybody? Okay, I need an emotion then to approve the consent.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as amended with the exception of LUP-6, who is not here.
Okay, okay, motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Our vote, I was just told that our voting machines are not working. We'll try to reboot it when we take a break here in a couple of hours. So we're going to do this with a hand vote, so all in favor approving the consent agenda, and that's approved 5-0. Okay, thank you. And we'll see if the applicant for LUP-6 comes in and we'll handle that when it happens. Okay, John?
Okay, all those folks on consent, you're free to go today. Just come back in two weeks for the Board of Commissioners hearing. Moving into the continued case agenda. Rezoning case Z-111 of 2016, RSDC-1 LLC. Request rezoning from R-20 to R-5 for the purpose of a residential subdivision in landlot 400 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Shallowford Road east of Alaska Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Z-111? Let the record show there's two people opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Okay, let's get the applicant up then. Good morning, gentlemen. Give us your names, please.
I'm Greg Nobles and
Sean Conley.
We're here on behalf of the applicant on this one, the Rollators and the Carter Families and the Lampley Families. We've gone back through this and reviewed the STIP letter as requested last time and gone through it, added some things to work with the HOA Association. The site plan here is attached, if, I'll put that up on the screen for everybody to
Excuse me just a minute. John, this was one we heard and held from last time, is that right? Okay, I don't need to know everything because we are very familiar with this case, so if you want to give me a summary, that'll speed things up. Yeah, good deal.
Regarding the summary, I'll let Sean bring us up to date on the, on the STIP.
The original plan started at nine lots. We brought it down to seven, working with Hedge Grow and with the commissioner's comments that we came in before. We've redone the STIP letter a few times, worked with the folks from Hedge Grow, Hedro. We've got some last-minute stuff in, I believe, as late as yesterday in regards to, from what the community wanted next door. So I think they have a couple of questions they want clarification, and I think you guys had mentioned you want some clarification, so we could, hopefully could clarify these last remaining things and get this one off the, off to the mayor and council next in two weeks.
You have lots of time. You can give us a little more than that if you want to. If not, we'll just move forward.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys have any questions, I think
We'll do that in a few minutes. Anything else you want us to know or?
We've, we've made corrections to the site plan, so we've given more space to the, where we were supposed to. We only had 20-foot setbacks before, which Commissioner Porter wanted us to, we had that incorrect, and we got it done appropriately. We put a, gave enough distance for some of the neighbors on the other side that they asked for some, some specific things with the fence that we had in before along lots 1 through 3 by the amenities, and we also gave some concessions for some different trees, not the Leyland Cypress that you guys had talked about. So I think this presents the best plan to get through with the commissioners and the mayor and council, and I think we came to an agreement with the neighbors as well.
Which mayor would that be? Just kidding. Okay, that it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys. You want to have a seat? Let's hear from the opposition now. Come on up, please. Good morning. Give us your name, please.
Mary Bash. I'm behind lot 3 at 4053 Bittersweet Drive. I'm not opposing, I just want clarification on a question from item number 24 on the stipulation letter where it says, "Every effort will be made by the builder to complete all construction within 36 months from the start date." I know our attorney had said, "From the months of the final zoning approval," so I'm just curious what the start date is and want to confirm that if it's developed, it's not just left and as openly and that it will be built. That's all I have a question about. Everything else is fine. I will say that I had to be the one to contact the developer to get the stipulation letter and everything started, so I'm a little concerned, you know, if this is something that's going to be a habit in the future. I just want to make sure everything's covered and everything's in writing, that needs to be in writing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mary. I really do appreciate all the input from the neighbors. Mary was one and several others, and I see them sitting out in the audience today. It was very, very helpful for me to hear from you folks and converse with you and also with Sean and Greg. They were all very helpful in working through this. Sean, why don't you come on back up and let's clarify the point that Mary just raised. When do you intend to start? Any idea?
If we get past on the 16th and we have the 30-day rescission period, I'll probably start construction drawings immediately, the preliminary drawings that I have to get into the city. And then what I was telling her is that depending on how plans go and comments come back and forth, that process should take six weeks or less, hopefully, knocking on wood. And then, you know, as soon as we have the permit, we'll start right away. We'll, you know, as we said before, we would start demoing probably within 100 days of the houses that are there, and then keep moving forward as the process allows us.
Which brings me to another question. We had talked about, and it wasn't on the STIP letter, but I'm going to add it back in, the current structures that are on the house. What's your intention about demolition of those?
As soon as we close on the property, we'll have a demo permit in hand. So we'll, as fast as we can get it, we'll start. So I think you guys had mentioned maybe 100 days from the time of
Probably 90, but yeah.
Yeah, 90 would be fine. That's not a problem to put that in there.
Okay. We also talked, and I may need to get Dave Braden to come up and address this, we also talked at our last hearing, and I did have an inquiry by a couple of neighbors about a potential berm across the back of the lots that face the Hedro. I don't know that that's needed. I don't know that that's necessary. Have you talked to Dave about that or what's your intention there?
When Dave came up last time, he said that the, the water that's flowing in from their property was coming from their own subdivision, and he said that anything that we, Dave, you could correct me if I'm wrong, anything that they're going to require us to do is going to divert any water that we have from our site going right to the pond. So I think the berm is something that I don't believe is necessary because it's going to be designed accordingly where all the water is going to go to the detention pond.
Okay. The stormwater flow, stormwater detention, all of that was a big point, as you know, a big
Absolutely.
area of contention that we've been dealing with for the last several weeks, and so that's why I got the question just a few days ago, will there be a berm there? I talked to Dave about it earlier. I'm not sure, Dave, I'm going to need you to come up. I really think that's an item that should be handled at plan review. Dave has told me that if, if it's determined, and I'm going to brag on Dave, he's an awfully good stormwater engineer, if he determines that plan review, which is one of our processes, that that would be helpful to prevent stormwater from flowing into Hedro, then that'll happen. It may not be necessary. There may be other ways, swales and different things in order to, because we do want whatever stormwater is generated from this lot. We don't want it flowing back into Hedro. We want it going toward Shallowford, toward the detention pond, but Dave assures me that we can handle that at plan review. So I don't, I don't know that we need that as a stipulation, but I want you to know that's something we're going to be watching very closely.
From the first meeting that I had with the ladies in, in their attorney's office for the homeowners association, I know that was their biggest concern, and I had a plan, a giant plan out, and I told them that we would
Okay.
direct the water to the pond. Anywhere on, anywhere on our site, we'll direct it to the pond.
Yeah, and what Dave actually said, as I recall, was that about 2/3 of the water flows correctly, only 1/3, maybe 1/3, and that's questionable, flows back toward Hedro from this site. So it's not quite that bad, but it still needs to be addressed. We don't want to do anything that'll harm them with stormwater coming from your property, so
Absolutely.
And you understand that. The other question that was raised by one of the planning commissioners, and I believe at the last hearing, if not, I did hear from them, lot number 7, which is the one closest to your entrance, it's not, to me, it's not a big issue, but I was asked to clarify with you, which way will that house face? Will it face internally? Will it face Shallowford Road?
It'll face internally.
Okay, would you consider four-sided architecture for that house? The others are three-sided with a water table, which would be very nice. Would you consider four-sided architecture? Because that, that's going to be very visible from Shallowford Road. I had a couple of neighbors that really questioned that.
I can consider it, absolutely.
That's like saving, I'll try to save the trees, you know. Yeah, lot number 1 is the same way. So your intention is for everything to face internal toward the street. Let me just say this then, I would recommend four-sided architecture for, really for both of those houses. It's not necessary on 1 as much as it is on 7, but some enhanced landscaping for sure behind lot 7 on Shallowford Road. I know you're going to have a landscaping plan available probably in a couple of weeks or less. Be sure you focus on, on landscaping, especially for lot 7. Anything on Shallowford Road and lot 1.
Okay, yeah, well
That's the original landscape plan, I believe. Am I right?
No, actually, because the original plan had the other lots on it, so this is
Oh, that's right, this has 7, okay.
I have a
Go ahead. You have a question?
A quick question, since we're discussing lot number 7, where is your driveway going to be?
It's going to be on the, in the, in front of the property, which would be
One of the STIPS is for no curb cuts on Shallowford.
Right.
It's going to be right here in the front.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, just a quick question. Is the rear of the house going to face Shallowford Road or is it going to face the little parking lot there?
As it sits, it's going to face Shallowford Road.
Okay, so that's why we really need four-sided architecture in that one lot.
Yeah, I think we'd like to see that, and I think your landscaping is going to be fine, but I think the four-sided architecture, at least for number 7, would probably be advisable, so we may want to make that a stipulation. We'll get to that in just a minute.
And we could probably work when I get a little bit more detailed with my builder, if it's, if it's, if it's an easy fix to do, which I presume it could be, we could if it's, if it's, if it's an easy fix to do, which I presume it could be, we could have that on the side as well, as opposed in the back, and landscape it behind on Shaliford Road.
Discuss very quickly, the, I know we're going to have a six-foot privacy fence down the side next to the amenity area, the children's playground and so forth for hedge row, and then it turns and goes across the back. How far across the back are you going to carry that?
Well, there's an existing fence that's up there, so we're going to try and meet, meet the fence that's there. That's why, when the, when the neighbors spoke about it, there was an already existing fence, so we're going to try and get the fences to line up accordingly on the property lines.
But it will turn the corner and go down to approximately lot three?
Oh, yeah, it'll, it'll turn the corner, go around, per my conversation with the ladies on lot three, or who lives behind lot three and two, I'll take it all the way to the end of lot three.
Okay, that's good. Okay, any other questions for Sean? We'll cover that, yeah. Yeah, okay, anything else? Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. You can have a seat. This one has been around for a while, and it is time for us to move on and get this thing passed through to the BOC if we possibly can. Given that we do have a revised stip letter, and Sean and I have talked, and I've talked to some of the neighbors about that, there are still a few things that I think need clarification and some additions that I want to add, but we do have basically a pretty good stip letter. We do have a site plan that seems to work much better. We've reduced the number of lots. The renderings have been filed, and those look nice. I think we're going to be fine with the design of the homes. The application does fit well within an MDR, medium density residential, which is what the land use category is. It's very well there from a density standpoint, and the RA5 zoning requirements have all been met. So I, I think, given that, I think we're ready to move on to a motion. I do think there are a few things that I'd like to change on the stip letter, so unless we have further comment, I'm ready to move forward with it. I'm going to recommend approval of Z111 for the RA5 zoning category. Subject to staff comments and recommendations, we're not in conflict. Subject to the revised stip letter, I'm using the stip letter dated April 17th. This stip letter went back and forth many times, but the one from 417 is the one that was submitted last to the zoning department, and I'm going to work from that one. So subject to that stip letter.
Do you have the one with 25?
I'm going to take care of that. And also to the site plan, which was originally dated 326, and I think that is correct as well, with the following additions and corrections to the stip letter. Stipulation number one on the stip letter, that date shown is incorrect. It should read March the 26th. Stipulation number two, I need to delete that and clarify by having it read, subject property consists of 2.48 acres in total land area and shall be developed for a maximum of seven single-family residences, period. All lots to be at least 7,500 square feet. The way it read currently, it was, it was not clear at all whether the houses or the lots were 7,500 square feet. So if we'll have it read that way, that should take care of that. Stipulation number six, the setbacks are correct as shown, but I need the side setbacks to show, or to read, the side setbacks will be a minimum of five feet to the lot line and 20 feet between homes. That is what's shown on the site plan, that just wasn't what was shown on the stip letter. The other setbacks are to RA5 standards, so that should be fine. Stipulation number nine, I need to add to the end that no construction shall occur on any nationally recognized holidays. Stipulation number 10 was a bit confusing, and I found some redundancy in some of those statements. So again, I want to rewrite number 10 completely, have it read. During the construction and build-out phases, all reasonable effort will be made to preserve the trees currently found within the identified buffer areas. To the extent that existing trees are damaged, the applicant agrees to replant them consistent with the county arborist's recommendations. Applicant agrees to establish the 10-foot wide landscape buffer behind every home at the lot lines with hedge row neighbors, and a 15-foot wide landscape buffer will be provided behind lot three. That was an agreement he made with the neighbors, and they asked that that be included, so I'm glad to put that in. Plantings will be an evergreen variety as approved by the county arborist. Now, I'm not going to go into details with that because it is covered in the stip letter at a different place, so that's all that needs to say. But at the end, we need to add further, during construction and build-out, all construction and delivery vehicles will be parked on the site and not on any nearby or adjacent streets. We don't want to block any streets. Stipulation number 11, there was one minor modification that was omitted, and that should be added back in, so after the words "height of the building adjacent to the property", we need to add "or changes the location of the entrance." So that's an additional minor mod that should have been put in. Number 12, the height of the fence is shown incorrectly. The height of the fence should be six feet and not four. Number 13, there is a misspelled word. Again, it's one of those minor things, but I think while we're making all these corrections, we might as well get that right, too. The variety of trees that's been recommended is an arbor vitae, and that is spelled A-R-B-O-R-V-I-T-A-E. So let's get that in there, so we're not planting blackberry bushes. We want the arbor vitae. Then let's go to stipulation 14 had to do with the berm, but I think we're going to handle that at plan review, so I'm going to leave that one as it is and not put that in. Number 20, stip number 20, I need to add to one of the HOA responsibilities, the detention area. So to the long list of things that HOA would be responsible for, please add "and" the detention area. Number 23 will be a new item, has to do with street lighting, which was omitted. If street lighting is to be utilized, all lights must be environmentally friendly so that no light penetrates outside the property boundary and onto any of the adjacent properties. One lady said, "I'm fearful they're going to be shining right in my bedroom," so that should take care of that. Number 24 will also be a new one. This one was in again, out again. I told Sean I think it needs to be in again, and it will take care of a lot of concerns that people had about how quickly we're going to get started, and that is a reversion clause. The BOC had this in before, so I think they're going to like to see it, and it should read, number 24, if a land disturbance permit has not been issued within 18 months after final BOC approval, the subject property shall revert back to its original zoning classification of R20. That's just a way of, of being sure that Sean gets busy and starts building these houses as quickly as possible. Let's see. Number 25 is also a new, and it was one of those that was erroneously left off. Applicant agrees that the residence built on lot number seven will be four-sided architecture, which will be pre-approved by the district commissioner. Likewise, landscaping for lot seven must be pre-approved by the district commissioner. We talked about that just a moment ago. Number 26 was omitted also and should be added back in. Existing structures currently found on the site must be demolished within 90 days after issuance of a land disturbance permit and demolition permits. I think I've got it covered. Anybody see anything? Yeah. Mm-mm.
You just read in three new ones, 24, 25, and 26, and I guess that replaces the 24 and 25 on the letter that we saw yesterday.
Which one are you looking at?
Well, I think this is the one that I got yesterday, but it's not dated.
That's not the one I'm working from.
Okay.
The only, that, that one that we received yesterday, the only change to that and the one I'm working from was the addition of one item, and I've got it covered here.
Just, just as long as it's clear to the clerk.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't miss any, I think. Okay, anybody else? Okay, that would be in my motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second from Gault. Any further discussion? Here again, hand vote, all in favor? Okay, thank you, folks. Good luck. Get started. Build us some pretty homes, and we'll all be happy. Thank you very much. Okay, John, what's next, please?
Yes, sir. Res zoning case Z112 of 2016, Duncan Land Investments LLC. Request rezoning from R20 to R15 for the purpose of a residential subdivision and landlot 308 of the 16th District. The property is located on the western side of Blackwell Road, Apple Blackwell Place, and on the southern side of Northwoods Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z112? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Just for the record, while you're coming up, Richard, and getting established, I'm so used to seeing our boards working, I forget to read in. I have to read into the record, though, that last one was approved 5-0, so now, Richard, go ahead, please. Give us your name.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, my name is Richard Duncan. I am the applicant for Z112 requesting rezoning for approximately 3.288 acres on Blackwell Road for a single-family residential neighborhood consisting of seven lots. I have requested that the zoning of this property be postponed several times in order to negotiate with the owner of the adjacent acre. Dave Braden and I have been working with the homeowner of, on their concerns about drainage in the detention pond, and they are thankful for, for the board's patience, the patience of the board, allowing them to focus on cancer treatments before making this important decision. That additional acre has been added in the project, to the project, eliminating the previous drainage issues. Property is currently zoned R20, but I am seeking for an R15 zoning. Surrounding zonings to the north is R20, which is Northwoods Estates. To the east across Blackwell Road is R20, which is Blackwell Place. To the west, R20, single-family house. And to the south, R20, which was a single-family house with a 30-foot wide driveway separating it from Stockton's Chase, which is an R15. Density proposed density of the new R15 layout is seven lots, is approximately 2.13 acres. The surrounding Stockton's Chase subdivision and the other side of the 30-foot wide driveway has, has a density of 2.11 units per acre. All other, all other remaining details that I have agreed to for this project are in the stipulation letter dated April the 21st, 2017, and sent to the planning and board of commissioners. This applicant meets Cobb County Comprehensive Land Use Plan and all R15 rezoning requirements. Since Cobb County's professional staff has recommended approval, and there is no one here in opposition, I am asking for your approval of Z112, and that you, as a planning commission board, would consider it for consent agenda. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Just for the record, again, anyone here opposed to Z112? I cannot see and hear any, it's back to this board. Judy, I believe this is yours. Is that right? No? Who, who's handling the discussion? We had no opposition.
Thank you, Richard.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, my goodness. First of all, I appreciate that he has worked and that they have reworked the plan several, several different times, and that this plan doesn't require any variances. So that was a big concern that we had of where it needed any variances. And there's no opposition, so unless there's any further comments, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this, subject to all the staff comments, the recommendations, subject to the letter presented.
April 21st.
April 21st, and subject to. I have, wait, just a minute. Richard, did you submit your elevation, any elevation drawings?
I have not.
Okay. And that would be subject to the district commissioner to approve elevation drawings at their hearing.
The elevation, the stipulation does.
Richard, if you're going to, if you're going to talk to us, you've got a.
That's okay. I got the gist of it.
Okay, it may not be necessary, but we can't take anything from the.
It's okay, Richard, I got the gist of it. So.
On the stip letter, it does recommend, it says what the actual architectural design of the homes will be. I think it's stip letter four on it, it stipulates it's going to be the Craftsman style with three, with architectural design with brick, stacked stone, or shingles in the front.
Okay.
It is, it is stipulated in the letter.
Clarify one thing for me. The, the original application was for 3.28 acres, and you've added to that?
No, the original was two and a half acres.
Okay, so the.
We added almost another acre.
The total area now is 3.28?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got you.
Yes, sir.
That's fine. All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with those stipulations, I would recommend approval, and I would recommend that we put it on the consent agenda.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and also for addition to the consent agenda for the BOC. Any further discussion, comments? We called for the hand vote again, so that's approved 5-0. Thank you very much. Thank you, Richard. Okay, Mr. Peterson, what's next, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Res zoning case Z15, 2017, Curly Family Homes LLC, request rezoning from R30 to R20 LLC for the purpose of a single-family residential and landlot 198 of the 20th District. The property is located on the east side of Acworth-Dewes Road, north of Stylesborough Road. The applicant is representative, is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z15? Please raise your hands. Keep them raised.
Yeah, keep them up until we get a good count, please.
Let the record show there are 10 people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. For the record, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant owners. The applicant is Curly Family Homes in this application for rezoning. This property is located off Acworth-Dewes Road, and is comprised of 34.2 acres. The requested rezoning is from this existing category of R30 to a proposed category of R20 open space community, or as we say, R20 OSC. It is proposed for a total of 45 homes, which is a reduction from its initial submittal of 54 homes. This reduction results in a proposed net density of 1.32 units per acre, which is well within and well below the future land use plan recommendation, which is very low-density residential, which encourages densities ranging up to two units per acre. So we're well below the future land use plan recommendation for density. I want to first just jump right to the plan and go through that with an OSC or R20 OSC. It's very important to go through actual aspects of the plan and what we're providing.
Just to orient you and, and the rest of the folks here, this is Acworth-Dewes Road on this side. This is the 34.2 acres. What we are proposing is a open space community that complies in all respects with the open space concept, R20 OSC guidelines. We are not requesting a variance. We're not requesting 30 variances. We're not requesting one variance. We're requesting zero variances for this plan. What we have provided is for a total of 45 homes. In this plan, you'll see the hatched areas, which are, which consist of the designated open space. Under the open space or OSC rules, that open space must be contained within and will be contained within a proposed conservation easement so that it is permanently protected and not included within the backyards of folks' lots. It's not included within the lots. It's not owned by individual homeowners, but owned by the homeowners association and a conservation easement granted to Cobb County so that the entirety of the area can be protected, which is one of the goals. There's several goals of an open space community, and one of the primary goals is the protection of sensitive streams and stream buffers and other types of sensitive environmental features. It can also be to protect other land or to provide for flexibility in design, and it can be also to set aside other areas for open space. But here, we have met the minimum requirements of 35% open space. That open space contains, does not contain floodplain, wetlands, or lakes. It contains primarily where you have a stream, and then you also have expanded stream buffers that go beyond that, a minimum of 50 feet. And that area, again, could be included within lots, but under our proposed OSC and per the OSC guidelines, it's excluded from the lots. In addition, what we have provided to the exterior, especially along our northern boundary, this is an R20 subdivision adjacent to us on the norally side. It has been built, it's not been built to R20 standards. It was built with much larger lots, but despite that, what we have done is made sure we maintained a good ratio along our boundaries so that we're matching up lot for lot and width for width along that entire northern boundary, and we do the same thing on our western boundary, where we're, again, we have an R20 subdivision that is in fact built to R20 standards and is, and does exceed the average yield of 1.7 units per acre, and that's Stylesborough Hills. And again, though, we have made sure that we're maintaining at a minimum, at least no greater than a one-to-one ratio on those exteriors. As it also relates to some of the component parts of this OSC, what we are providing for in terms of side setbacks, these lots are a minimum of 95 feet in width. Our side setbacks are a minimum of five feet, but we have also stipulated to, and our plan shows and accommodates all along for every lot, a minimum of 20 feet at separation between homes. And that's a minimum of 20 feet of separation in between homes. As such, we are providing the same exact separation in homes that you will find under standard R twenty or R thirty setbacks and orientation that provides that space. These lots are not packed in there. When you see a site plan such as this, it can appear that way, but if you actually look at the measurements, these are ninety-five and greater foot-wide lots, meaning they can accommodate three-car inside-entry garage homes, and also meaning they can have the appropriate separation between homes throughout the entirety of the subdivision. Now, for a little bit, I think of perspective in terms of the R twenty versus R twenty OSC. What's being shown now is what's sometimes referred to as a straight R twenty plan. And what this is, is a plan, a site plan that we have designed for R twenty. Again, this is Acworth-Dewes Road. This plan contains a total of forty-five lots and complies with all R twenty standards without variance. We have reviewed this R twenty plan, and one of our thoughts at one point was in fact to simply delete this to a straight R twenty. This is a great R twenty plan. It contains forty-five lots. All of the lots are a minimum of 20,000 square feet. However, per R twenty standards and requirements, the stream buffers are contained within the lots. There is no permanent protection. Yes, those are stream buffers, but they're now individually-owned stream buffers, which degrades the permanent protection of those. But again, what this demonstrates is not that we're smart engineers, but what it demonstrates is that we're utilizing the open space concept and the OSC not to gain density. Heck, we're only proposing 1.3 units per acre. But we're not trying to gain density through OSC. What we're trying to do is twofold. Number one, gain some flexibility in house location and design, and also gain the advantage of permanently protecting these streams from homeowners and placing those into an open space concept so that they can be enjoyed not by individual homeowners, but by the community at large. Next, also, I want to show you the proposed homes that will be here, and these are also attached to our stipulation letter. And he's going to show you these homes, and these are two of the examples for Curly Family Homes, which is a locally-owned and operated family builder, has been for over twenty years. These are homes that are currently, have been built by Curly Family Homes. They are for sale in Cobb County, adjacent to Kennesaw Mountain, just off of Old Forty-One. These are the exact same homes and home styles that he plans, that Curly Family Homes plans to build in this subdivision. These homes will range probably in upwards of $500,000 and $600,000, similar to what they are here, and that is the vision that they have for this subdivision. They've got very nice homes here in West Cobb, in a subdivision that enjoys the wide-open spaces of the stream buffers that are provided, as well as having the separation amongst the homes and between the homes that you would find in any other standard or straight R twenty or R thirty subdivision. The... Hold on, let me put this down. Didn't want to get some feedback for you. You know, as we've developed this proposal and met with the surrounding owners, one of the things that we've come across, we believe, is simply a misunderstanding of what is compatible and what does open space community mean. What I'm showing you is the final plat. It's the page one of two pages of the final plat for Millstone at Walnut Creek subdivision. It's a great subdivision. Looks great, built great, developed well. That was zoned in 2000s to R twenty and R thirty OSC. So it was zoned R twenty OSC and R thirty OSC. This subdivision is nearly directly across the street from the proposed property. Much of the opposition that we have read and received has originated from this subdivision complaining about our compatibility. But the compatibility in this area, I think, is one of perspective. We have subdivisions ranging from .9 units per acre all the way up to this subdivision. This subdivision is an OSC. It was approved at a density of 1.85 units per acre. We're proposing 1.3 units per acre. So the perspective of what is compatible certainly needs to be taken into consideration. This is an OSC at 1.85 units per acre. It has 8.99 acres of open space. Of that open space, 5.7 acres of it is actually floodplain. More importantly, though, that open space only comprises 28% open space, which required a variance, a substantial variance. Our proposal does not require a variance as it relates to open space. We meet the minimum requirement of 35%. The side setbacks for this are a minimum of fifteen feet between structures. Again, less than what we're proposing of a minimum of twenty feet between structures. This proposal, as approved, has a rear setback of a thirty-foot buffer, also requiring a major and substantial variance from the OSC regulations, which require your rear setback adjacent to exterior R twenty or R thirty properties to meet that R twenty or R thirty standard. So adjacent to R twenty properties, that rear setback should have been thirty-five feet. That rear setback should have been forty feet adjacent to R thirty properties. Again, a variance. This is a great subdivision and a great example of OSC. But again, perspective of what is compatible in this surrounding area and what we're proposing is consistent, is compatible, and is being done without a single variance being requested. We think it's a great plan at 1.3 units per acre. We are absolutely compatible from a density standpoint and from a design standpoint, and we would urge your recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Right on time. I like it when that happens. Let's hear from the opposition at this point, please. Come on up. If there's several speakers, you can all come up and just line up. That'll save some time if you want to do that, that'd be fine.
Good morning. My name is Donna Ripple, and I reside at 4130 Stilesboro Road, and I have a lot of area along this proposed site. In fact, three of the largest lots will butt up to my property line. On Thursday, April 27th, I met with Mr. Matt Couteau with Woodland Development concerning the property in question. And my particular question was, what size of buffer would there be between my property and the proposed project? The map says a forty-foot buffer. I asked for a bit more, and I was told no. That would impact their lot sizes. I said, okay, if, could I please request that you keep the natural buffer of the mature hardwood trees already in place? This is a beautiful wooded area. Again, I was told no, because drip lines cost so much for so many trees instead of not putting anything. So then I asked, could you put a row of Leland cypress, at least at the property line? And again, I was told no, that was too costly. As you can tell, I'm very concerned about having some sort of buffer there rather than just sod. My second question to Matt was, has anyone done a documented walkthrough of these thirty-four acres in search of Civil War relics and trenches? I know this is less than two miles from the Battle of Pine Mountain, and there's historical plaques all over this area. He said he did not know that there had been such done, and he would get back to me, and I have not heard back. In closing, I would support an R thirty OSC at a density of .9 units per acre, which is thirty-one homes. The .9 UPA is because Oak Mountain Farms is adjacent to this parcel on the north and has been developed at .9 UPA. And my property is to the south and is one home on three acres and is zoned R thirty. I hope that you will consider this change in the application process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ripple. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I am Patricia Snyder, and I am the HOA president from Millstone at Walnut Creek. And I have with me a petition that has 132 names against the rezoning for this area. And I would like to clarify that we have been requesting information, not complaining about the development that's going in there. We met with Mr. Couteau to ask our questions and discuss his responses to those. However, our community continues to be, remain opposed because of the density. And I realize when you compare it with Millstone at Walnut Creek, it does not look as dense. However, the stipulation letter states that there will be passive areas for the neighborhood to use. The streams and creeks are the passive areas, but there are no areas to access them without going through somebody's home at this moment on the plan as we see it now. Our neighborhood has experienced flooding in the past, and we do not want to see the streams and creeks disturbed back in that area, which will increase the potential for flooding in our area. We have a major concern about the setback. When we spoke with Mr. Couteau, we asked about the front area, because I've taken pictures of all of the subdivisions on Stilesboro, the corner of Stilesboro and Acworth-Dewes Road, and all of them have significant setbacks. You do not see houses from the street, with the exception of Oak Mountain, and those are large lots where you see the house from the street. The others are set back with a natural area. These first two homes are right up to the front of the street with the side of the home on the street. So those concern us that it does not look like the other subdivisions within the area. So our concern is for many of those things, but mostly for the passive areas, the streams and the creeks, and not to increase any flooding within that area. Developments such as these impact the lifestyle of the residents in that particular area. I know traffic is already a struggle in that area, and this will add to that. But our major concern is the lifestyle of our people and the water and the flooding and the setback from the front. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patricia. Do we have another speaker, please? Come on up.
Good morning. My name is Peter Amlingmeyer. I represent Oak Mountain Farms, Homeowners Association, property directly adjacent to the proposed development. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Gunther for his courtesy to me. You've always responded to me, and I appreciate that. Our concern is, one, if I look at the recommendations of the staff, item C, it is staff's opinion that the applicant's rezoning proposal will not result in a use which would cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, or utilities. Oak Mountain Farm is one of five subdivisions that are within a quarter mile of this proposed subdivision. Acworth-Dewes over the years has become a major cut-through for Paulding and Bartow County. Our subdivision is half a mile from the light at Stilesboro Road to the north. During rush hour, that section of Stiles, of Acworth-Dewes is backed up past our subdivision. We can't get out of the subdivision were it not for the kindness of strangers. If we head south towards Jim Owens Road, the county still has not put in a traffic light. It is still a four-way stop sign. That also backs up for half a mile. So my concern is not with the quality of the homes that are going to be put there, but the impact on the traffic. Acworth-Dewes, I can't see how you folks could enlarge Acworth-Dewes. I can envision the millions and millions of dollars that would be spent trying to have that road adapt to the increased traffic. Just this morning, coming down on Stilesboro Road at 8:30, there was still a backup that was almost half a mile. There is so much traffic in that area, the impact would be absolutely significant when it comes to any development, and to put in the number of homes that are being proposed is just going to exacerbate the situation for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Kelly Gamble, and I'm president of People Looking After Neighborhoods. We support the adjacent homeowners and the community that are here today. Cobb County has specific guidelines, yet this rezoning application has not included all aspects of an open space community. Cobb County also has a growth management policy document known as the Comprehensive Plan. The Comp Plan specifically notes loss of rural character in West Cobb. Keeping the rural character of West Cobb intact will require active involvement from the government, the community at large, and the developer. The applicant provided a straight R twenty plan, which staff noted twelve lots appear to be too impacted by stream buffers to be viable. The dedicated open space in the R twenty OSC are the stream buffers that cannot be disturbed for any residential development. Potential viable green space for recreation is not accessible by the community, which is shown in green. Cobb County has a policy to preserve environmentally sensitive areas, which include groundwater recharge areas and watershed supply sheds. It is important to protect these areas so that they are not negatively impacted by future development. The streams located on this parcel are within the Alatuna Creek Basin. Oak Mountain to the north has a stream that feeds this property and is zoned R twenty at .9 UPA. The streams on this parcel flow towards Fry's Farm, which is zoned R twenty at a density of .36 units per acre. This area flows into the seven-mile water intake buffer for Lake Alatuna. The proposal presented today does not represent a more efficient use of the land and mocks the relevance of the growth management policy and Cobb County code. Also, mention was made that Millstone was an OSC. If it was developed back in 2000, this OSC code was not in effect. Therefore, were the standards different and have been changed to address the issues that have been brought up under the Comp Plan policy? We ask you to deny this application as presented today and instead consider staff recommendations of the R thirty OSC. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. We do have a few seconds left. Do we have another speaker? Can not see and hear any. We'll close this portion of the hearing. Skip, I believe this is yours, sir. You want to handle our discussion.
I'd be happy to. First thing I'd like to do is I'd like to say thank you to the community and to Matt Couteau and Kevin Moore for all the hard work that you've all been involved in over the last several months, that this has been in play. Last month, it was continued for the specific purpose of allowing a redesign. We've got that redesign. The redesign is still not quite there. In fact, I have eight changes that I would like to make to this, and I'm going to recommend, I'm not making a motion yet, but I'm going to end up making a motion recommending that we hold this so that the applicant can go off and make these eight changes. The first issue has to do with density. Staff comments were that they wanted to see this as an R thirty OSC design, and from a density point of view, that means anywhere from 1.1 to 1.25 fully bonused units per acre. We're at 1.33 units per acre right now, which is over that. I want to see the density come down to forty-two lots, 1.25 maximum units, a maximum of 1.25 units per acre. So that's my first change. The second change has to do with lot sizes. In fairness to the applicant, when this was originally submitted, the policy of, at least of West Cobb, has been for years to have a minimum 10,000-square-foot lot size for R twenty open space community subdivisions, recognizing that the OSC overlay ordinance has no minimum lot size specified. But the policy has been 10,000 square feet. I think that as the county intensifies and grows in West Cobb, as we have more development, there's a strong feeling that we need to be raising that. When this was originally submitted, staff told the developer that you need to meet a minimum 10,000-square-foot lot size. I'm going to raise that. I'm going to raise that to 12,500 square feet minimum, and I think that it's going to be possible to probably, you know, push it even further than that. Right now, the average lot size is around 19,300 square feet, and that's pretty good. That's largely because we're allowing this, if it's, when it finally gets approved, and if we do approve it, we're allowing it to stay at R thirty, I'm sorry, R twenty open space community standards, which allows, which requires 35% open space. Were we to move to R thirty open space community requirements, that would push the open space requirement up to 50%, and that would push the lot sizes way down. So I like the idea of staying at R twenty from an open space numbers point of view, without pushing it to R thirty, but I like the density of our, the R thirty density. So what does all that mean? I want to see, number one, a density of no more than 1.25 or 42 lots, 1.25 units per acre. I want to see a minimum lot size of 12,500 square feet, and I would love to see larger lots than that. I just talked about why I'm comfortable with this being R twenty OSC rather than R thirty OSC, because pushing it to R thirty OSC would be counter to keeping the lot sizes up. There's been a lot of talk about the open space and the nature of that open space. The open space, the OSC overlay requires that at least 25% of the open space be buildable acreage. In this case, a lot more, specifically 100%, meets the definition of net buildable acreage. And so this is, it's, even though it's surrounded, it's got streams and it's surrounded by buffers around those streams, it is buildable open space. Concern has to do with the access, the access that the community will have to that open space. I understand that it's possible to build... I understand that it's possible to build pervious trails through the open space as long as you don't disturb trees and, and other vegetation that's in there. And so I'm going to recommend, as my third change, that those trails be identified where the access points are and so on and so forth. If there are any questions about that, on exactly how to do it, Dave Braden assures me that the county code allows for, allows for that. Regarding stream buffers, there are a couple of confusing points, specifically around the northeastern bridge and around, near lots 42 and 43, where the stream buffer lines are not continued. So I would like to have that be verified to show the stream buffer lines consistently throughout the entire plan. Behind lots 12 and 13 and 30 and 31, there is a lot of open space that's sort of, not, there's a lot of space that's added to those lots that could be open space, and I would like to see that made part of the open space. That'll improve the percentage open space, which is fine. It'll reduce the average lot size, which I'm not concerned about because I think 18,300 is, is well above where we would like, typically like to see it. And so I'd like to see those, those parcels made part of open space so that they're forever not going to be built on in any way, shape, or form. Buffers. We heard from Donna Riepel that, yeah, she's concerned about the buffer between her property and the southern edge of this parcel. I would like to see a discussion happen, Matt, between you and Mrs. Riepel, that resolves that with an undisturbed and/or enhanced buffer along the complete edge of her property that joins this parcel. We've, we've talked about, it was mentioned, the impact of all this on traffic. That's always an issue when any new development comes in. If we force this development to be 42 lots, that's not that many more than what an R-30, straight R-30 subdivision would yield, which would be somewhere in the range of 37 to 39 lots. The developer could go in today and build this without any stipulations other than meeting code as an R-30 subdivision. So the additional three to maybe five lots that the developer will get with the density that I'm asking for, in exchange for an open space community that has open space and it has a lot of stipulations surrounding it, I think is a really good deal for the county. That doesn't solve the traffic problem that we have, but it's not the responsibility of this landowner and this developer to solve the traffic problem that we have growing, I recognize, throughout Cobb County, certainly West Cobb County. There are no variances. I would like the stipulation letter to clarify the architecture. I would like to see it reflect an intention of building three and four-sided architecture. And finally, my last comment is, I want to make sure that the final stipulation letter reflects all the DOT comments. I think they're missing right now. Is that right, Ashley? You sent me an email yesterday saying that, then that's exactly right on. So my, those, those are my comments. Unless there's discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
I might also recommend, and I think Kevin Moore, you're in possession of the comments from Philip Westbrook. He also had, and many things were covered by Skip in his summation, which was good, and we appreciate that, but there's still some other things that Philip mentioned that were not covered in the stip letter, so you might want to review Philip's comments, try to include those in any new stip letters that you come forward with. Plus, we didn't talk about the one request we heard, I've forgotten who brought that up, it may have been Donna, but I'm not sure, about the architectural survey.
Oh, yes.
Do you intend to add that in?
Well, there's been, yeah, there's got to be an archaeological
Archaeological.
Survey done.
Archaeological.
There was some confusion, I'm not quite sure where it came from, in the comments that had to do with the Chaney newcomer house. That's not on this property, it's not associated with this property, and so it's, it's not relevant. I'm not sure why that comment was in the staff comments, but I would like to see an archaeological survey done to ensure that any archaeology, any Civil War artifacts and the like, if they're there, will be preserved.
Not an architectural survey, right, an archaeological survey.
Yeah. That's what I said.
Yeah, got you.
Okay, any other comments?
I'll just make a comment to the attorney. We really need you to get stuff in on time. This was, you know, this letter was delivered last Thursday, which is after the county deadline, stamped by the county last Thursday. We didn't get it till last Thursday, and, you know, quite frankly, you know better. So let's do better.
Okay, any further comments, questions?
There's some of the question out there.
Well, that's, if you want to call him back up, that's your call.
Well, he hasn't even testified.
Okay.
So, okay, no, I don't. Okay. So, yeah, my motion is that we hold this until the June cycle to allow the applicant to make these changes and to meet with the community so that you all can come in in June with no opposition. I'd love to see that. So that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to hold. We have a second. Any further discussion, comments? Okay, hand vote again, all in favor. That's approved for holding for another 30 days, 5-0. Okay, thank you, folks, very much. Peterson, what's next, please, sir?
Rezoning case Z-21, CT Holdings LLC requests rezoning from R-20 to LI for the purpose of an office warehouse and land lot 794 of the 16th District. The property is located on the southeastern side of White Circle, east of New Day Church Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-21? Please raise your hands. Let the record show there's two people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
While those folks are being sworn in and coming forward, we do have one planning commission member that has a conflict and will need to recuse herself, Judy.
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself from this application, and so I'll just go out to the audience.
Be fine. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chairman and Board, before we start this case, the applicant has shown up for LUP 6, so after this case, we'll put that back on.
We're glad to do that. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Moore.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Kevin Moore. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and owner, which is CII Holdings, in this application for rezoning. This is 4.3 acres. It's located on White Circle Road, currently zoned R-20, and what is being proposed is a rezoning to light industrial for a, best way I can describe it is for a traditional light industrial development consisting of two industrial buildings that would be office warehouse, much like you see across any light industrial zoning or zoning park or existing industrial uses, primarily as you can see in the immediate vicinity of the subject property as well. The, turning to the site plan, if I could go to that, and I'll work through that site plan just to show you that, explain a couple of things before turning to some of the other parts of this application.
And this particular property, this is White Circle as it wraps around and heads in this direction, which is heading to 41. It actually intersects very closely to this property with Cobb Parkway and 41 at a signalized intersection there. What we are proposing is two light industrial buildings. These would be prefabricated metal buildings. We have agreed as part of our stipulations to brick the front of these buildings, and it's two 18, maximum 18,000 square foot buildings for that purpose. What we've shown is a conceptual design that will have, provide parking for this building in this location, parking for this building here, then an area, of course, that can be provided so that deliveries as well as trucks and loading can, can be accommodated here with sufficient turnaround area. In addition, one of the things that we want to clarify that was raised by staff, what's shown on this particular property, it's, it's a funny shape. It curves right in this location here. One of the discussions has been that of, well, where is the front setback versus the side setback for purposes of Cobb's zoning ordinance? What we are providing, though, is that we are not requesting a setback variance. We do not need a setback variance for this regardless of where it's called out to be a front setback or a side setback. But the reason for that is when you have a curve in the road like this, it can be considered to be a property having two road frontages, and for purposes of Cobb County zoning ordinance, the shorter amount of road frontage counts as your front setback. But with a curve in this and being the same road, it could be called out that this is the front setback. If that's the case, we can accommodate that completely within this plan without requesting a variance for that purpose. In addition, it has been suggested or noted by staff that it may require a variance or where we seeking to exceed the, a maximum impervious area of 70%, in which we are not. Again, we would come within the 70% maximum impervious area for this property and are not seeking a variance for that. So I just wanted to be clear because it was just noted in the staff comments that those may be required, and I want to make sure that at least this planning commission was assured that we are not seeking those variances nor they outlined in any type of letter from us. The proposal, again, would have for a new industrial development. While this could be considered speculative, it's not considered speculative. This is an industrial company, is an industrial outfit that does industrial buildings. Like most industrial developments that are done, especially ones of this size, can I tell you exactly who those tenants will be? No, I cannot. That doesn't mean it's speculative. It's not me doing it. It's somebody that does industrial development doing it, and as such, he has a list of potential users in mind, all of which would comply with the light industrial uses and permitted uses, all of which would comply in the sense that if you drove to a light industrial, industrial park, you will see light industrial users. It might be a cabinet shop, it might be a survey company, it might be a plumbing company, it might be various and sundry, different types of companies that have use of indoor or inside warehouse space and office space in the front. Oftentimes, those are, you might have two or three tenants in a single building, that those can be arranged, or one tenant for the entire building. But again, that doesn't make it speculative any more than you have a shopping center that has proposed uses. It makes that speculative. So this is not, is not in that sense, but what is intended is for, and to continue to fill the need for new industrial space that is of that type, because you have lots of users, lots of businesses who need that and who need that space, and that's what would be provided in this location. In terms of some of the other aspects of this zoning, I'm going to turn to the zoning map. It'll help explain this particular area, which is confusing if you just look at the zoning map. And I want to point out a couple of things. Here's our site here for this proposed rezoning along White Circle. Across the street, you'll see a large R-20. It's R-20 in name only. What has led to some of the land use issues or zoning issues in terms of confusion is that this piece of R-20 is a gigantic Georgia Power substation facility. If you drive out there and see it, it is, it is, I can't think of a better word than gigantic. It's the largest one I've ever seen in an area like this. It takes up a huge amount of space and actually dominates the land use on this end of White Circle. You can't get away from it. It is there, and it's located here. This property alone, this section of White Circle, was owned by Georgia Power. As part of its acquisition and as part of its obtaining this, it owned it for a very long time and only has, now has, has sold that very recently to my client, to this applicant. You will also note, light industrial to the rear in Cobb County, light industrial existing to the rear in Cobb County. This was a piece that was zoned last, at the end of last year, to O&amp;I, which just simply provides the access to this light industrial. Hamilton Grove subdivision, you can see, is well back from the proposal here. And lastly, what I want to tell you is that if you look on here, you'll see that this is City of Marietta, but I want to fill that in for you because it's light industrial. So what is surrounding this property is light industrial property. This piece of property fits in well as light industrial. What else does it need to be other than simply following the existing land use pattern? It's not setting a precedent. It's got light industrial to the rear, not to the side, not in the front, but to the rear. This Hamilton Grove subdivision is a great subdivision, and it has light industrial on its northern boundary, existing light industrial in the City of Marietta and in Cobb County, another light industrial building here. This property over here on the other side of White Circle is light industrial, and all we're proposing is light industrial with some stipulations and limitations that will ensure that it's built appropriately, used appropriately, and that the impact is minimized as it relates to light industrial. This is now, as you can see, a light industrial area across White Circle, adjacent to this substation from Georgia Power, heading towards 41 again, or Cobb Parkway, is property zoned RM12 that will be built as a 12-unit-per-acre apartment multifamily community that will be right there on the edge of 41. The rest of this property on White Circle is dominated by light industrial uses. As you come from White Circle this way, you pass through a residential area, and then it's light industry until you get to 41. When you cross over 41, it's light industry, over and over again in this section along Cobb Parkway. So this land use that we're proposing in this instance is compatible, it is consistent. Any other category that would be placed here or used here would be inconsistent. You can't build homes on this site unless you want to create a major land use conflict. Anything other than light industry simply places an undue burden on this particular property and property owner to develop something that would not necessarily be viable or consistent with what it's facing to its rear, to its right, to its left, and across the street.
With that, we do have a stipulation letter, and as Planning Commissioner Porter has noted, we were working with some of the surrounding owners to work in some additional stipulations, which we received, and that is why it is dated April 27. If you do not want to consider it, then don't consider it. But I would ask that you do consider it because it does contain the requests that were made and provided to us on that Wednesday, April 26, and as a result of those discussions, we were able to then push this forward. But that's certainly within your discretion, whether you want to consider it or not. But based on that and based on what we're providing in a request, that we are not requesting variances, but rather simply straight, good old-fashioned light industrial, but done in a style that will have brick fronts and done in accordance with the county's own standards and ordinances. And with that, we respectfully request your recommendation for approval to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's hear from the opposition. Come on up, please.
For the record, I'm Carol Brown with Canton Road Neighbors. I was asked to step in and assist a bit in this area. It's a bit out of our normal area, but we originally had asked Mr. Moore, send him a request for, would approve the LI zoning subject to the brick facade, landscape plan, and limited hours of operation. Subsequent to that, we had an opportunity to drive by subject property, and we're also, we also received some information about an EPD charge that was made to the applicant on the adjacent property that he owns. The applicant is CII Holdings LLC, and he owns the property contiguous, which came in in December, is Z-118. He's asking to rezon now the site next to it is Z-21, and while we're not really here to talk about Z-118. Z118 has been problematic for the adjacent neighbors in Hamilton Grove. They are currently in compliance with Cobb County code. There is still an open case with the state EPD. They have resolved most of three items on a consent order, one of them being to pay a $20,000 penalty, and they have satisfied that. The other would be to show a plan of corrective action for dumping a fill. And they have had an engineer certify that the fill on the property is clean fill. And the third is to file a notice of intent and pay the permitting fees, and they have done that. However, the EPD is still tracking this. But the bottom line is, this is what the site looks like. It's five point, it's five acres, and then there's a small 1.4 acre tract that was rezoned in December. This is adjacent to a residential subdivision. There's going to be, even though it's going to be finally developed appropriately, we hope, there's going to be a lot of semi tractor trailer trucks on a very narrow two lane road. There is residential across the street, the new Walton Communities, Hamilton Grove, back on the other side of white circle, and on Turner Road, there are some very upscale properties that have been developed that are residential. This is, this is subject property. It's adjacent to this property. Our concern is that this property, which does have significant value, as stormwater comments note, in helping the air and water quality and, and the proximity to several streams that flow into Noonday Tributary Four, the concern is that a development like this probably shouldn't be allowed to expand. Therefore, our, our request would be to delete this application to O and I and let the Board of Commissioners approve a specific use at such time one comes forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol. Next speaker, please.
My name is Dan Fields, and I'm representing the Hamilton Grove Homeowners Association. There's a hundred and six members of that association. And it's interesting that this property was purchased as R20, establishing a value of the property prior to being rezoned to industrial, which the applicant is requesting. With that comment, there are some staff comments that have been made to you and some recommendations. The one being that Kevin addressed shortly ago was, the request was waiving the front setback from the required fifty feet to thirty-five feet. He said that he did not need that in order to move forward with an industrial zoning. But per this plan, I think he would have to take a look at this plan to be sure that he would not be able to, that he would be able to move forward. Then the impervious surface, maximum impervious coverage of seventy, seventy percent for the property, he may need a waiver of that in relation to the CAC land plan designation. The comprehensive land plan is CAC with an R20 designation. This is not a typical use in the CAC land use plan in zoning classification. One of the comments made by staff says white circle is classified as a local, and according to the available information, the existing right of way does not meet the minimum requirements We've received over the last couple of weeks quite a few calls, concerns about this request. There was quite an uproar at the annual meeting of the homeowners association in regards to the O and I even. We request that it be denied. But at best, for the applicant, perhaps O and I, with the Board of Commissioners determining what the use is, maybe that's a compromise. But given the concerns over the issues related to the stream, EPD, the homeowners have asked me to request denial of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Do we have another speaker? Okay, not seeing and hearing any. As we saw, Ms. Williams recused herself from this. She did have a conflict, and she had asked Ms. Powell if she would handle our discussion. So Thea, you can have it, please.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, would you please come back up? I would like to have you clarify why the front setbacks would not be required first and then discuss the variance to the impervious percentage.
First question is asked to front setbacks. What we have provided on this plan, just by virtue of reference, this is a thirty-five foot building line that is along this area right here. There is a, if, if this area along white circle is called out as the front setback, meaning this has to be fifty feet, this building is well within that front setback and fits. The only issue is we would need additional fifteen feet. The thirty-five foot setback line is there. There is about at least ten feet before you get to this building. At most, what we'd have to do is just adjust this particular building to come within a fifty foot setback. But as you can see, you can do that in a number of different ways. And, you know, in checking with our engineer, if this is called out as the front setback of fifty feet, we just modify, put a fifty foot line right here. This building is fine. This building may have to be adjusted by only a couple of feet or less. So that's why I said we do not, we're not requesting, that's why it's not in our application package to request a variance from fifty feet. If, however, the setback from white circle of fifty feet is called out from this side, that means the side of the property having the shortest amount of road frontage, which is sometimes done on curved roads at this, at this issue, like this, then you certainly have an abundance of more than fifty feet as a front setback, and the major side would then be thirty-five, which it complies with. It's just a matter of how staff would apply the setback rules either way. We're not requesting the variance, and there's more than sufficient room to adjust that building by less than five feet if we need to accommodate a fifty foot front setback along that portion of white circle. As it relates to the impervious, in checking with our engineer, we're not requesting a variance from the seventy percent maximum impervious surface area. And Phil, that we meet that under the, under this current plan. But regardless, it can be verified unless we're asking for it. We're not requesting an impervious surface variance whatsoever.
So essentially, what we're looking at may or may not be the plan?
What you're looking at is the plan. The, from an impervious surface, as I, as I stated, our engineer verified with me and said, yes, it's, it's not more than seventy percent impervious. It was just noted by staff that if it's not, it's awfully close. But that's what engineers do is draw to the, you know, draw to those standards, but it's, per them, it's not more than seventy percent. As it relates to the front setback, as I said, if staff calls this line along white circle to be the front setback for this piece of property, all we have to do is adjust the lines of the building footprint to accommodate that on the one building, which is not anything more than shifting it two feet or less than five feet. So that's why I'm saying it is the plan. It doesn't take any adjustments to accommodate those comments from staff because we're not asking for them.
Right. But, but there are issues that reflect this design that have yet to be determined in terms of where the setbacks are. I don't, I don't want to belabor that point necessarily.
Not from our standpoint, but if staff wants to call it out as in a different location, then that's fine. We'll, we could accommodate that very easily.
When you and I met, we, we did discuss the adjacent property that has been referenced by both of our speakers. And you had mentioned that the applicant had received a land disturbance permit recently. Do you have a date on that?
A week ago, Monday.
So it's my understanding from code enforcement that in August of two thousand fourteen, on the adjoining property, the applicant was cited for going into the buffer, not having a land disturbance permit, and doing some things that were not appropriate. And EPD came into the picture as well. So the, the county issues were resolved according to code enforcement February of this year. So we're looking at over two years for compliance for Cobb County Code Enforcement and not totally compliant for EPD because they're still looking at this property as recently as January the twenty-fourth of two thousand seventeen. Correct?
Incorrect. And if I could, if I could explain.
Yes, go ahead.
Certainly. Factually correct. There was fill dirt that was made available to this owner for free that was delivered to the site. He took that fill dirt in and leveled it off, which, under Cobb County's land disturbance rules and regulations, would have required a permit. He did not have one. So that's correct. But that's what the reason was, was that fill dirt was brought in. At that time, when code enforcement cited him in that timeframe, it also referred the matter to EPD because there is a small culvert, and there could have been an issue with the stream and with the fill dirt. At that point in time, once it became an EPD case, that is a process unto itself, which comes before you handle or finish resolving Cobb County's code enforcement issue. Cobb County Code Enforcement is going to wait to determine and make sure you have complied with, as part of their compliance of the case, comply with EPD. Just like any other case, compliance with EPD and/or working with an EPD complaint, there's a process called due process. And with that, there is a back and forth of engineering, studies, evaluations, and results that have gone back, that go back and forth while that case remains open to determine if there has been a violation, if there has been one. In this case, to the extent of that and what should be done or not be done to verify that there are no longer any of our, no longer any environmental impacts as that process takes time, and it took time here. But during that time, you don't do anything. It just stays exactly like it is, and that's what they did. They did comply with and work with and cooperate with EPD and with Cobb County. They have concluded that matter with EPD. As with any EPD case, it remains open simply for verification and ongoing verification. They just simply keep it open. So they want to come back and check, you're, you're doing what you said you do. That's all they're doing. But they have completed those, and the orders have been entered, which is what Cobb County was waiting on from its code enforcement standpoint, where the code enforcement became compliant at that point in time. And at that point in time, he was able to come forward, present his plans for the adjacent property, submit those through Cobb County. They've all been approved, and ultimately, a land disturbance permit issued a week and a day ago. Meaning, he has done everything he is supposed to have done as a result of the actions he took, which he shouldn't have done. But he has made amends, so to speak, which we allow for that. We allow for people to make amends. The key is, did they do it? In this case, they have. And furthermore, it's on an adjacent piece of property, and it's not this particular property.
That's true. Yeah. It is adjacent. But the same applicant that, for two and a half years, has taken up time of code enforcement and EPD to come into compliance, is asking for the privilege of building something on this piece of property. And he has had the use of the adjacent properties. The O and I portion from my visit does not comport with parking and access only, as we evidenced from the photographs that were presented.
And he, again, let me explain, until he had the land disturbance permit issued a week and a day ago, that O and I portion, which was just zoned at the end of last year, that's what he's doing, is that he's now able to develop that site, the full site for the plan that was approved at the end of last year, first step of which is installation of the stormwater management facilities, which is why you have the equipment there and why you have the activity that you actually have to build it. And so that's what he's doing right now, is complying with the conditions and stipulations of the zoning that occurred at the end of last year. And my understanding from Cobb County Code Enforcement and Cobb County Community Development is he's doing exactly what he's supposed to be doing from that standpoint of moving forward with that development. But like any moving forward through development, right now, at the beginning of it, it doesn't look, it's not going to look pretty until we're done. But I, I understand how that appears and understand how that looks. But just to, I want to make sure I provide some context.
I did watch the tape of the December Z118 zoning, and I believe I wrote down your quote that you were going to be good neighbors. So, interesting definition of, of good neighbors. And you and I discussed the fact that there were not tenants that were readily scheduled to go into this facility. And I asked you about hazardous waste uses possibly on, on the property, and you indicated, no, that you did not think that would be the case. And so that is elevated in my mind in the fact that we don't know who the tenants are going to be and because of what has happened in the past with this piece of property. So that's all the questions I have for you, except if others, commissioners.
Let me just jump in. I, I share Ms. Powell's concern about this applicant. We did receive a number of emails, not just from Carol Brown, but from a number of folks that live nearby and other people who say they just travel this road on a regular basis. I lived here my entire life and very familiar with white circle. I know that it, as little as ten years ago, maybe even less, there was a furniture showroom and warehouse there and a few residences, and that's about it. And it has changed dramatically just in the last decade or less. But that road, as was mentioned earlier, that road was never designed and intended to handle the kind of commercial traffic that we're seeing there now. When I went out and looked at the site a couple of times, I was almost run over by a big eighteen wheeler. And I'm afraid that if we rezoned this property to light industrial, we might have that same, we might have more of the same added to the road, and that's, that's troubling. I don't know if the stream that runs across this other piece of property was rerouted, but I'm told that it was. That's not permissible either. The fact that the EPD had to get involved and that a $20,000 fine was levied and paid tells me that something about this just still doesn't seem right to me. And I'm real concerned about, about this use, not knowing what really would go there, as Thea just said. It could be any number of uses. But we did hear from a number of neighbors that are quite concerned over this continued expansion of, of commercial and industrial uses, that really, this road is just not intended to handle. And I know that's a county issue, but stormwater concerns, I think, are clear. And I'm just, I have a real issue with the way this is laid out. I think it needs some more work. Anybody else have any other comments or concerns, Goff?
I'll just add that, you know, the site plan concerns me.
I'll just add that, you know, the site plan concerns me, you know, more than worrying about the actual applicant in that, because we are zoning the property. And, you know, some of the entrances are a concern, especially that one on the little short frontage to me. Truck traffic on this narrow road's a big concern. Also, you're going to see these loading docks from White Circle. And people who bought all the residential down there didn't buy in an area intending to drive through an industrial area. So my personal belief is, O and I would be a lot better category for this property rather than light industrial. The property's just not really deep enough to do light industrial and not have it have a bad view shed, and also the truck traffic and that.
Yeah. Skip?
I don't really have anything new to add. I agree with the, it feels like it's more appropriate to be O and I, and I agree with Carol Brown and all the comments that have been made along those lines. I am concerned about whether there's a possibility of restricting the flow of those big semis only to the west of this property on White Circle towards 41, and not allowing them to go around the curve the other way through the residential area. But that's not part of the zoning. It just seems like that would be, you know, a reasonable thing to stipulate, no matter how this gets developed, given that there is the semi-traffic there on the parcel that we rezoned last fall. And I'm concerned mostly because there's the RM12 development that's going in, and and it's just, it's becoming more and more residential through there. That's the trend. So that, I would support pushing this to O and I, deleting it to O and I.
I'd support just not approving it at all. I think this just adds to the congestion that's there, the potential for congestion that's there. The site distance that Gault mentioned is a real concern. We're talking about safety for a lot of people, and this this new development that's going in right around the corner there, closer to 41, is just going to add to the congestion. And yet, we want to continue adding sites like this, which are going to bring in a lot of big truck traffic. It just, something about this just doesn't feel right to me. So I'm, I think I'm opposed to this. Thea, it's back to you, I think.
Yes. I'm going to just make a few comments, and then I'm ready to make my motion. At the zoning hearing of the Planning Commission in 2016, Commissioner Trombetti talked about the area in general, and she decided to delete the LI request for what was eventually zoned for O and I because of the increasing residential, very close to this property that you could that you could walk to. And that has not changed in the six months. That development is is currently in construction. It is just the other side of Noonday Church Road. As you can see from the map, it's very close to this development. Regardless of whether we think this is speculative or not, I think there are many other issues. The plan, which we're really not sure if we're looking at the plan, as it's going to be, where the curb cuts might be, again, what the usages are going to be on this piece of property. And since this is within a community activity center, light industrial is not compatible. I understand there is light industrial just below this, but if you look at the landscape company, they are totally fenced, they're totally landscaped, and you cannot see what's going on behind the fence. To Commissioner Porter's comment, the loading docks will be in full view of anybody that drives by. And I realize that the power plant is across the road, but the power plant is not sitting on top of the road, it's back on the property, and there are significant trees along the roadway that obscure it. And White Circle, a lot of people have commented about it being a local road. And correct me if I'm wrong, commissioners, do you expect to have 18-wheel trucks on a local road?
Donald Trump might call that Georgia Power area huge.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's quite all right. That's quite all right. And finally, I am extremely concerned as to how this property is going to be developed based on the stormwater comments. The staff talks about, quote, "providing significant air-water quality, soil stabilization, and storm flow mitigation benefits for the watershed." And then they say, "If this property is built the way the plan is shown, that it will further increase the pavement, stormwater runoff, and non-point source pollution. Once the damage is done to a stream, it doesn't matter what the fee is, be it $20,000 or $200,000, you can't go back and fix what has happened." Therefore, I would like to make a motion to deny Z-21.
We have a motion for denial. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
We have a second from Gault. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Okay, a call for the vote. We have to do this hand again. Okay, so we have 4-0 for denial. Good luck with it. That's all I can say. Judy, you can come on back. We appreciate your help on this. Okay, we did have to pull one case from the consent agenda a little over an hour ago, LUP 6. And I understand, John, that applicant is present now.
Correct.
So why don't we read that back into the record and see what we can do with that?
Okay. LUP 6, Still Family Farm LLC, requests a land use permit renewal for the purpose of agritourism and a corn maze in Land Lot 439 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Mathen Road, west of Florence Road. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the attached parking plan received by the zoning division on March 2nd, 2017. Statement of proposed elements received March 2nd, 2017 by the zoning division for this applicant only, for the months of September, October, and November only. Stormwater management comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 6? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Back to board.
Okay, so that was originally on the consent agenda. The applicant was a little late getting here, so we had to pull it. She's back in. We have no opposition, so I need a recommendation to add LUP 6 back to the consent agenda?
This is in my my area, and I make the recommendation that we add that back into, we add LUP 6 back into the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion second. All in favor of doing that, please raise your hands. So that's approved, 5-0. We sure can. It is time. Why don't we take a quick 10-minute break, and then we'll be right back. Mike, I'm sorry. And Debbie?
You need to approve the consent agenda as amended. So you added...
You're right. You're right. Absolutely, because we did amend it. Okay, so we need a motion, then, to approve the amended consent agenda. And we have a motion and a second by Ms. Williams. So now we're going to approve the amended consent agenda. All in favor, please register your vote. I keep trying to push a button. Sorry. That is approved, 5-0. Okay, thank you, Debbie, for keeping us straight. We'll take a quick 10-minute break, and we'll be right back. Okay, we're back after a quick break, so we'll just jump right into it. Mr. Peterson, what's our next case, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. LUP 5, Natalia Vilchenko, requests a land use permit for the purpose of three hands in Land Lot 173 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of North Mountain Road, southwest of Forest Peak Circle. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 5? Please keep your hands raised. Let the record show there's 12 people here in opposition. Is there anyone here in support of LUP 5? Please raise your hand. One. Let the record show there's one person in support. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
If you think you might want to speak, but you're not sure, come on up and let's swear you in. Doesn't mean you have to speak, but let's just get it all done at one time. Okay, y'all can have a seat. Let's have the applicant come on up. Come on up and give us your name, and tell us what you'd like us to know about your application. Good morning.
My name's Bob Winn. I am the a continuous property owner. Matter of fact, I have the largest common property of hers. One thing I need to say is she's an immigrant from a country that when she related to government where she was, it wasn't good. I was subject to arrest and torture and whatever, and she's scared to death. And I have assured her that this America and that you will treat her with as much help as you can.
We'll all give you a hug when we're through, okay? We don't bite. We're glad to have you here, believe me. Yeah, don't be scared at all.
Basically, you know, I don't want to speak. You know, English is not a first language. The basic thing is, she wants to have pets in her backyard, is what she wants to do. So, go ahead.
Get close to the mic. Close to the mic. There you go.
If you would like to find definition of word poultry, and you will go online, and you will see that poultry, this is any kind of birds which you actually grow for meat or eggs. My birds, they actually not, I cannot call them as a poultry. They are my pets. I have invoices with me which actually shows that. I bought it on the website, my pet chicks. Moreover, I bought also, I bought also even liches for chicks. If you probably ever heard about chickens and liches, you would probably agree with me, but this is not a pets. I mean, this is not a poultry. This is my really, really, really pets. Unfortunately, by several reasons, we cannot accept any pets living at home. And I have 12-years-old son, and actually, we decided to get chickens as pets for him. By the way, yes, we got this order. So we grow these chickens when still, since they were two years, two days old. So they came to our house like like this. Small ones. I have all signs of my nearest boarding members, member, neighbors, and who actually they loved my chickens. I just would like probably to show this people who are opposing, you can see marked their locations, which actually... This is in the middle. This is in the middle. This is my property. And these are properties of the main organizers and oppositions.
Tom, Tom, you're good. You're good. You're good.
I know that the main argument for these people, they will say that they made a survey, which actually showed that 2 of 30% against my chickens. But I would like to make a note that that survey allows only 100 voices. And actually, 100 voices, it's just 6% of our community. Moreover, this is all letters...
Tell them why you have chickens and not a big dog or a cat.
Yeah, but you know that actually, that's funny. Did you show the pigs? Did you show the pigs?
Yeah, we'll get to the pigs later.
Okay.
Because if the chickens go, pot-bellied pigs will come in there. They'll have the choice of, you want chickens or pot-bellied pigs, so.
This is all letters from my neighbors.
Yeah.
We'll get, we'll get to that later.
Okay, well, you've got about five minutes left, so go ahead.
All right, let me jump, jump in here. I and my attorney go check all these things. And I was unaware that you did the code section. 134-198.3, permitted use of livestock. Livestock generally is hoofed animals. Doesn't apply to poultry. So I am confused why there's a violation of this on this. More likely, the sections that came up, Section 134.7, poultry, where you have to have 30 feet from property. 134-281, residential agriculture farm and wood products and livestock and poultry sales. And that is, has to be on property of two acres or more. All right, she doesn't have any sales. So this doesn't apply either. So it's the opinion of my attorney and me, is that these don't apply at all to someone having pet chickens in their backyard. They don't have to have two acres, and it's not required. What's ironic, what is ironic on this, is we're talking about pot-bellied pigs, is that the state of Georgia Supreme Court has ruled that they are household pets. And the covenants say it has to be a generally accepted pet, and has to be in the backyard. All right, so they can get rid of the chickens, maybe, of which I don't think they should get rid of, she can get pot-bellied pigs. So they need to make a decision, do they want this or that? One thing is, when the opposition comes up here, you're going to hear a whole bunch of ballooning. They did a survey, there's 550 homes in there, and they're going to say 2/3 are rejected chickens. Well, what they got is about 100 responses back, which would make it about 66 people, a homes out of 550. So it's ballooning. They could have surveyed the contiguous property owners who all support her having the chickens, all of them, who would be the mostly... Would be mostly affected. And to give you an idea of how biased and, help, stick this up there. They had a meeting last night, and they only invited the people who are against the permit. There was no open forum to have people come in there and give the whole, whole idea. A lot of this is probably the president of the homeowners association is going to come up here, and she's a real estate agent. Huge conflict of interest here. I mean, is she representing the homeowners association, or is she representing selling the houses? Need to answer that. They're going to say it affects property values. There's no evidence anywhere that having these chickens in the backyard affects property values. I asked two appraisers to check that. No effect on appraising value on that. There's no, there's no value effect on my home, because I have an investment deal where I'm guaranteed 5.5% appreciation every year. And there's nothing in that insurance policy that says that any chickens or any animals inside that would affect the, affect the base. So basically, what we have here is a lady who has a son who cannot have other types of pets. She has a couple well-maintained pets in the backyard. Her contiguous neighbors have no problem with it. And I mean, I'm the one that's most affected by it. I have the most property on it. And I wholeheartedly approve that she has them. And I'm, I mean, and once again, I don't think, I don't think this applies. This poultry is not livestock. Now, I understand, if you want livestock, you want two acres or more. Now, that makes perfect sense. But if you have a couple little chickens... But if you have a couple little chickens well, well put into an enclosure, you don't need two acres. Okay? You have anything else to say?
Yesterday at the meeting, it was present just 11 people. And 10 of them, they are against the chicken, one of them therefore. By the way, they excluded me from the broadcast list. They just do not let me know that they are going to make a meeting. They are solving problems, which actually my problem, but they are doing.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, we got it.
You got the picture?
Yeah, we're fine. You're out of time. If you want to sum it up real quick, you can, but we're really out of time now.
She wants to have a couple pets in her backyard. They're acceptable. There are other pets there that are unacceptable.
Okay, we'll get into the code in just a minute here. Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you both very much. You can have a seat. Let's hear from the opposition now.
Watch your step here.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is Roberta McConney, and I'm one of the officers on the board of the HOA. I'll try to keep this short and sweet, you know, in the interest of time. I just want to cover two points. The first being that we did conduct a survey within the community, and we do have about 500 homes. And those that chose to participate voiced their opinion that they did not want chickens as pets being kept in the yards. It was an overwhelming majority of people that voiced that opinion. And it is our responsibility as the board to represent the best interest of our community, which is why I am here. The other point that I want to make is she indicated her first chicken was killed by a fox. We have foxes, we have coyotes, we have a neighborhood bear that roams from time to time. It is not safe. People that have cats, people that have dogs, they all know about this trouble. Most people will tell you they don't let their cats go outside because they will get harmed from the animals that roam our subdivision. I mean, we don't live in a rural area, but we do, just based on the terrain of our neighborhood, have things like foxes and coyotes, and it's not safe. It is setting these poor chickens up for failure. I'm going to turn it over to Beth, who is also, she works for our community.
My name is Beth Rutterheimer, and I have lived in Highland Point for 28 years. And I've been the administrative assistant for Highland Point for the last seven years. Highland Point, as you know, has 498 homes. It's on Sweat Mountain in East Cobb, and it is surrounded by residential homes. And every little last piece of land on Sweat Mountain is getting gobbled up. And, you know, the wildlife doesn't have anywhere to go, so it's in our backyards, it's walking down our street. And, you know, so that's why we're, we're asking you guys to deny the request for the chickens. We just think if every home has chickens, you know, how are we going to control that? And we did conduct a survey. We use Survey Monkey. It only allows us 100 answers. So that's it. I checked it last night. We do have 138. We can pay $229 annually for unlimited, but we've only used Survey Monkey twice since it started. So we've chosen not to do that. As of last night, we had 65 people against chickens and 35 for. And, you know, I, I have a, you know, a display where it could show you. You have some people's comments, both for and, and against. And as for the meeting last night, it typically, it was put out there, if you are against having chickens, please come to the clubhouse so we can discuss who was going to speak and that. We weren't excluding anyone. We just assumed that they had their, their own meaning, you know, to plan that. So I apologize if you felt excluded. There's another lady who came who was very much for having chickens, and, you know, she was allowed to attend. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Beth. Do we have another speaker? Come on up. Give us your name.
Hi, I'm Laura Waldrop. I live in.
I'm sorry, say again.
Laura Waldrop.
Thank you.
I live in Highland Point subdivision. We're actually somewhat new. I'm here to speak about the issue of precedent. Where one goes, others will follow. The variance can become a slippery slope, opening the door for others to follow suit or even to expand the scope of this variance to other farm animals. I'm not against chickens. In fact, with the whole farm-to-table movement, I've been quite enamored with the idea of raising chickens, especially to reap the benefits of farm-fresh eggs. However, I am against the proposal to allow chickens to be kept in a 500-home swim tennis community where the lot size is less than half acre. To consider a variance for a property that is within a planned development, having less than 25% of the current two-acre minimum and with a setback of less than half of the current 30 feet minimum is simply untenable. This chicken variance serves only the applicant and would be a detriment to our subdivision and our community. I'm not against chickens, just against chickens being kept in a planned HOA-governed swim tennis community where neighbors live in close proximity to each other and who would undoubtedly be impacted by this and potential future similar variances. We are not a farming or agricultural community. The applicant sent out a broadcast email to all residents appealing to the emotional side of the issue and asking, do you love your children? My answer is absolutely. I love my kids enough to teach them that they live among other people in a community that has rules and laws to promote and protect the interests of the common good. I'm not raising my children to become entitled and believe that the rest of the world should bend to their whims and desires. Further, any argument that other Atlanta communities allow chickens or smaller parcels, on smaller parcels, does not mean that we should allow the same in Cobb County. The residents of Cobb County have chosen to live here for many reasons. Other Atlanta-area communities also have MARTA lines. Does that mean that Cobb County should welcome MARTA? A further concern is the question of how animal nuisances will be monitored and violations enforced. Is there a noise or other offensive disturbance from chickens? What is the remedy? Cobb County has ordinances regarding nuisance-barking dogs, which even as written, is, are difficult to enforce. Would a chicken variance include provisions for enforcement? Should a nuisance situation emerge over time? There are lots of unknowns. Let's not confuse the issue here, which is simply to preserve the properties and protect the collective rights of all homeowners within our shared swim tennis community that has never been intended to be agricultural. A ruling on behalf of just one homeowner must be made with an understanding of the potential longer-term impact from setting such an unpopular precedent. As previously noted, an overwhelming 68% of homeowners oppose this variance, per data compiled from an anonymous online Survey Monkey poll, which polled the first 100. Please deny this application for a chicken variance.
Thank you, Lord. We have another speaker. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Camissa Thornton, and I live across the street from Natalia. I just want to say that I moved from Ostella, Georgia to Highland Point four years ago. And in the process of looking for a home, there were certain things that I had on my list that were important to me. And just an example of, you know, two of those things would have been the Colonial Pipeline. Also, you know, the electrical grid or the electrical tower. But I can certainly say that if, if I had known or if I had seen homes that had chickens or chicken houses or coops in their backyard, I would never have purchased my home in Highland Point. I would have looked elsewhere. So I can clearly say to you that not only is my home value important to me, but also the way that the home looks, what is being presented to people who come to the community looking for homes to purchase. So again, when I get ready to purchase, sell my home, I don't want to be faced with a decision of losing value on my home because someone has made a decision not to purchase my home because someone has chickens. So again, you know, I am asking for you to, in opposition, to oppose this variance. I can definitely say that in, regarding the matter of wildlife, my home backs up to the creek. So on a consistent basis, usually during the day and mostly during the night, there is wildlife that comes directly from the creek through my property as well as my neighbor's property. Wildlife can be seen going up to Natalia's property at night and also lives up on the hill on both sides of the property. And I'm not sure if you all know, but having chickens attracts various kinds of wildlife. And with the amount of wildlife that is in Highland Point, it is certainly a factor of, an issue regarding dangers to people who certainly do walk during the day and at night. I can tell you that I am familiar with chickens. My mom has chickens. She doesn't live in Cobb County. She lives in Fulton County. So not only my mom, but both my neighbor on my mom's right and left side both have chickens. So I'm familiar with both, with the look. I'm familiar with the care. And whether it's one or it's five, it's just a problem for me. And the problem lies in the value of the home and the perception that it will actually lead to other potential buyers of homes, you know, perhaps turning away. And also, again, you know, the value of the home that is being affected if someone goes to purchase. So again, you know, my, my whole point is just that I am very concerned with the value of my home being maintained. I'm very concerned with the dangers presented to people when they're walking along the sidewalk to my home as well as other areas. But again, I think that the neighbor needs to understand that there is a danger with regards to wildlife in the area, and it will seek out chickens. I mean, there's just no way around that. I can't tell you the number of times I've gone over my mom's house, and she does keep traps. But there's always a fox, a possum, there's something in those traps because they are attracted to chickens. There's just no way around that. So those are the points that I wanted to make clear today. But I will say that I did go to the homeowners' meeting yesterday. It was people there who did oppose as well as people who were for. But everyone in the community received the same email with regards to not only Natalia's concerns, but also the concern regarding the variance as well. So I just wanted to make sure that that was cleared and communicated today.
Thank you, Camissa. We are out of time. Were there any other speakers? Just let me ask. Okay, we are out of time, so we'll close this portion of our hearing. Oh, let's see. This is District 3. Ms. Williams, this is yours.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I want to get something, get the county attorney. The gentleman that spoke in the beginning with the applicant, talking about chickens were permitted and pot-bellied pigs. Would you clarify that, please, so that there's no, he said that they could get a pot-bellied pig if they didn't have the chickens, and I want to make sure that we clear that up right now.
I wasn't exactly sure what he meant by that when he, when he said that. So, I mean, we allow chickens in Cobb County of right if you have two acres. If it's less than two acres, then you need a land use permit, and that's what everybody's here today. So you can have chickens in Cobb County on less than two acres, so long as you come before this board and the BOC and it's approved.
And we approve it.
Correct.
Right, okay, correct. So just in case that you turn down the chicken, doesn't mean that you're going to get a pot-bellied pig. Either they'd have to come through the same procedure that we would have to with a chicken.
We cannot take any testimony from out there, okay, unless you're called back up. Debbie, is that factual?
John just mentioned that there's a court case. I am not aware of a court case that, that says that a pot-bellied pig is a pet. So I can't speak to that. I mean, I, I just, I can't speak to that. I'm not sure.
We're not here to talk about pot-bellied pigs anyway, so let's get back to chickens.
I, I went out to this side. This is a very, very nice upscale subdivision. It's large homes. They do sit on high heels. I mean, the terrain is pretty bad in this neighborhood, but, and you wouldn't know the lady had probably had the chickens unless you went around like I did and went up to the back. The problem with, when people move into these neighborhoods, they move in with the idea that they're going to be protected by the HOA, the homeowners' association. They didn't move into a farm. They didn't move to a chicken farm. They moved to a swim tennis community. It doesn't, the reason they moved in there was certain protection. Chickens can be messy. They can smell. There's all kinds of things wrong with having chickens a pet. I don't dislike chickens. This has nothing to do with where I like or any of us like or dislike chickens. It has to do with the neighborhood that it's in, the protection that the people were offered, and the protection of your homes too. So given all of that, the chickens, I understand, are a pet. But the chickens have already created a nuisance by getting the wildlife to come up there. There is abundant wildlife in this neighborhood because of coming off the mountain. So I think it poses more of a danger to the other neighborhood, the other homes around. So my motion would be to deny this, simply because it's not the right place. It needs to be, if you're going to have chickens, you need to be on a farm. You need to have the two acres.
Let me just weigh in, and then we'll see if we have other comments. I don't know, and I don't expect you to answer the questions here, but you mentioned you do have an HOA, an active HOA. I assume you have rules and regulations, covenants probably that cover. I don't know if this kind of situation is covered. If it's not, you might want to consider amending your HOA regulations.
It's covered, though. I didn't go into it.
I don't know whether it's covered or not, but anyway. The person who spoke first, I believe it was Bob, mentioned that the HOA president is, is a real estate agent. Well, that really is, has nothing to do with this case. If, if she lives in this neighborhood, and she does, then she has every right to be concerned and express what her concerns are. And I hope you didn't pay your attorney much money because he absolutely referenced the wrong part of the code. There's a complete area that completely describes in detail what's required. Our attorney here gave a synopsis of that, but it's more detailed than that. But we, this is pretty new too. One other thing I might say, we've only been hearing cases for poultry a very short time. They do require a land use permit under certain situations. But to say that they will definitely impact property values, I think the jury's still out on that. We haven't been ruling on these for too long. To know if they will or they won't, they might. I don't, I don't have any way of knowing that. But anyway, Judy, back to you. Anybody else? Comments? Galt?
First, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Since we didn't have a second. One of the things that strikes me with this parcel is that there's really no room to meet the ordinance with the chicken coops. So to me, that's the first strike, and it's a big strike because there's rules are there to make sure that it doesn't, you know, things running off don't impact neighbors. The, the second thing is, this is a result of a code enforcement complaint. And, you know, given the hill and everything, it's hard to imagine who complained but not for a neighbor. Now, you may not know who that neighbor is. They may want to remain anonymous. But, and then we have an across-the-street neighbor who also has an issue, and we have testimony that wildlife already ate. So this case, to me, looks totally different than the one last month that was in my district where we had no opposition from any direct neighbors. There was one person in the subdivision opposed. But it wasn't a result of a code enforcement complaint. It wasn't any of those. The person had plenty of, of land and could meet all the code requirements and all of those things. So from my perspective, it's really about a nuisance and not being able to, to meet the code here.
Anyone else?
So I would make the motion that we deny this based on the comments. And also that I would like to give a time, I think maybe 30 to 60 days should be long enough. Any comment on that?
At least 60.
60.
Yeah.
60 days to remove the chickens.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second, and you're okay with her amendment. Okay, any further comments, questions? Okay, go ahead and call for the vote. Are we still doing the hand? Oh, we have real voting? All right.
Yeah.
There you go. Just for the record, that was, the denial was, was approved 5-0. So thank you very much. Okay, what's next, John?
Yes, sir. LEP 7.
John, let me interrupt you. I'm sorry. Because this applicant really isn't familiar with how we do things, and Bob was good enough to come with her. and Bob was good enough to come with her and help her here. You do need to come back, though, for the BOC hearing, okay? And you can try again there and see if they will agree with you. That's on May the sixteenth in this chamber, same time. So you'll need to come back again for that. I'm sorry, John. Go ahead now.
Thank you, sir. LUP seven, Renika Rogan, request a land use permit for the purpose of a personal care home expanding to nine residents in Land Lot 1142 of the Nineteenth District. The property is located on the northeast corner of Clay Road and Golden Circle. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP seven? The director show there's two people opposed. All those registered to the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Okay, if you're going to give testimony, come up and be sworn in, please. Or if you think you might want to give your testimony. Thank you for your patience. Yeah.
I am with Care... Okay, that sounds better. Okay, again, my name is Renika Rogan, and I am with Caring for You Personal Care Home. And I am the applicant for this application. I've been with Caring for You for ten years, and I've been at this Maberton location where I'm doing business at right now for eight years. I am licensed. I am a licensed facility with three residents. And what I am here today is to pose for six. I did send in a site plan earlier, and that was just something my architect and I was just kind of messing around with. But when I got the chance to speak with Mr. Porter, I told him I really didn't have all my things together, but, you know, I can send you something. So once I realized how cost was costing, I knew I couldn't do twelve nor, I think it was fifteen, maybe? Twelve or fifteen in the beginning. So once you start going through this process, you realize, you know, what money you have and what you can and cannot do. So that's what I am here for.
Mike, there we go. You have lots of time. Tell us a little more about what you do there, the type of people you have, how many you currently have, what you want to expand to, how, will you add on? I mean, anything you can to help us make our decision.
So right now, what I want to do to accommodate the six residents, I would need a one bedroom, one bath. And what I do is I specialize in elderly ranging from about seventy-five to about eighty-five years old. Alzheimer's, dementia, low level maybe of a little bipolar, maybe. It just really depends. But I usually don't have any high-level clients at all. They're very quiet. They hardly even want to go outside. That's something I have to make them do. But that's my staff. There's a, I have staff that's there every day, twenty-four hours a day. I am the third person that's on, that's available. So we have, you know, I have two staff included myself. That's basically it. My staff are certified, CNAs, and that's it. We pretty much just do everything for them, really. There's, you know.
But you are wanting to add on to the house.
Uh-huh.
And you currently have three. You originally asked for nine. You're now asking for six? I'm not trying to steer the thunder garden. I just want to be sure we have all the facts.
Originally, on the site plan, you would see, I think it's twelve or fifteen. But once I sent in my application, I think I went from eight to nine.
Okay, but you're now asking for six.
For six, uh-huh.
Okay, that does change things. Okay, anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay, why don't you have a seat? We appreciate it.
No problem, thank you.
Let's hear from the opposition now. Any of you want to come on up? Good morning. Give us your name.
My name is Diane Phillips. I am part owner of the property next door, four nine three five Golden Circle. I believe you answered one of my questions already. It's not nine residents anymore. It's just six. Not really so much an opposition, but just a couple of questions. Realizing that people who own personal care homes are very special people because they're giving of themselves to take care of people who can't take care of themselves. And who knows, I may end up in one of those one day. Main question I have, what kind of, this expansion that's going on, what kind of impact will it have on the neighborhood property values? There was some question of whether or not the building was going to be physically expanded. And if it is, the question would be, what impact will that have on the neighborhood as far as property values go? It's a very old neighborhood. The house I grew up in next door is fifty-three years and some change old. And there are a few of the original residents still in that subdivision. And if they were to want to sell their homes, what would the impact be on their property values and their ability to sell with something like this?
This is not our time to answer your questions. It's your time to make your case. So if you have anything else you want us to know?
I would be opposed to it if the expansion would have an adverse effect on property values in that area.
Okay, okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Let's have the next speaker, please.
Hi, good morning, Commissioner Terry and Mr. Porter and the rest of the planning commission. Good morning, Mr. Peterson and staff. My name is Ray Thomas, and I am with the Maberton Improvement Coalition. We had an opportunity to review this application and just want to espouse a few points regarding the case and the application. First of all, I think there's recognition within the community and also in our country about the lack of affordability of homes, housing for senior citizens. And so I commend Ms. Rogan for trying to be part of the solution in her way. The Maberton Improvement Coalition has reviewed the application. And we have, we have recommended that the application be approved subject to certain conditions. First of all, we would like to offer that the home be of the same style and same compatible color as the existing structure. And I think that would go along in accordance with the previous speakers whose question about, who had a question regarding how the additions would look and the impact it would have on surrounding property values. Secondly, we would like to stipulate a condition. If this is approved, that this, that the home be subject to a maximum of six residents to be in compliance with the county standards of about three hundred and eighty square foot per residence for personal care homes. Ms. Rogan, we noticed has a, in the rear of the home, some stairs. And we're requesting that those stairs be converted to a ramp so that the senior folks will have greater and easier accessibility in and out of the house from the rear. Finally, we also ask that the garage will remain available for vehicle parking and at no point be converted to live-in space or storage. If the, if these conditions can be met, then the Maberton Improvement Coalition would recommend approval of this application.
Okay, thank you, Ray, very much.
All right.
We have another speaker? Yeah, we had a few more, but that's it, I guess. Okay, so we'll close this portion of the hearing. Gault, this is in your District Four. Sir, you handle our discussion.
All right, thank you, Mike. If I could have Ms. Rogan come back up? Okay. Okay. Do you happen to have any of your architectural information, you know, printouts of what you sent us with you that maybe we could show your neighbor? I didn't print one.
But what I have, he sent it back. He sent it to you, and that was incomplete still. I do have my plans in the car.
Okay, well, maybe you could show...
But I would love to, I mean, if she wanted to come over and, you know, meet with me, you know, check the place out. I know your neighbor. I didn't ever know that you owned the building next door to me.
You need to talk to us, not to them, okay?
I'm sorry.
Why don't you just do your best to describe it? What's it going to look like? How big will it be, et cetera?
To answer your real estate questions, the building will look, the extension will look just like the building itself. I, I'm not into green and blues and pinks or any of that kind of stuff. I want the same thing that's going along with the building itself. Yes, we do have to go by ADA once I step into another zoning category. So a lot of that ramps and handicap, you know, bars will probably have to be implemented in the home. Once I sell this house, it's up to me, which I know, if you want to buy a house, you probably want to get rid of ramps and handrails inside the home. There's nothing, I think that the value of the home will go up because there's an addition of bedroom and bathroom. So as long as I keep it the same as it is, you know, I think it was, you know, the value wouldn't go down. And I live on a main, I live on the main street, so I'm the house you will see. So I have to really keep that house looking good at all times. Not only for the neighbors, just for the business itself.
Okay, and you're proposing a cement board type of siding for the house?
That's what the developer said. I wouldn't know what it looked like.
Okay, but it's a siding. You're not intending to brick it?
Um, maybe not. I don't know the difference, but I know it's not. I know the breaking would probably cost a little bit, but who knows? I'm one room now. At first, it was three rooms. So one room is a little cheaper. Maybe I can do that.
Okay.
I don't know that, I don't know where that begins or ends. So I don't know how that will look from the other side of the neighbor on the side of me. So, but whatever looks good, that's what I want to do.
It's a brick house now. The architect on the plans has, you know, a hardy board type siding, cement type siding for the addition to the rear. And that's probably what you see in most additions on this type of house.
That's not a problem.
So I don't think that's a problem. I think the color's going to be important. And I think maybe we could just have the district commissioner sign off on the color of it. Another concern that's been brought up is, and I know we went with a lot of different sizes, so I'm happy to have you say six people because that makes addition smaller. Because the addition that I saw that was adding enough to go to eight people was, well, actually would have required variances because you would have been into the rear building setback lines and things like that.
Yeah, and another home, I think, too.
It could have been detrimental to the neighboring property. But I think a smaller addition on the back of the house, you know, would increase the value of this house without, I don't think, impacting the neighboring houses in that way. But one of the things that came up was landscaping around the property and just generally cleaning up the yard was a concern and keeping it clean. So that's something we'll, you know, probably want to address with, you know, we want to make it stand out as nicer and helping the values rather than...
Absolutely.
Than not being. So we'll probably require some landscaping and a plan for that. Just to verify, we talked about how many cars you'll have parked on the property at any one time? And you want to...
Yeah, usually there are no cars parked, pretty much. Like I said, I've been there eight years. I probably have had one staff that have had a car. Most of the time, they are dropped off, and that's because I run my shift one week on, one week off, or two weeks on and two weeks off. So there's no need, I guess they just don't have a car. Let's just say that. Because if they did, it would just sit there for a week or two. So they don't have a car. So out of the times that I've been there, they get dropped off and picked back up.
Okay, and your residents typically don't have one. I think right now, one does.
Do not have a car, but I do have a resident right now that does have one. And it's been very hard for me to have, to get him and his uncle to sell his car. But we go out there every week, and we clean that car out every week. So I am just still, with this situation, I might be able to get him to get rid of it because I can just tell him now that I got to get this car out of here, you know. But, you know, it is, it is a resident's car, and hopefully I can get that removed soon, really soon.
Okay, and with regard to deliveries, how often do you get deliveries to the house?
Not often at all. Not often at all. Most of the time, if anything needs to be delivered, it's usually through family, you know, that's going to bring something by. My mail, I have a UPS, so I very seldomly get any mail. But I have had a resident that did deliver all the time, and that just was one of her things that she did. But ongoing traffic, I do not get a lot of traffic.
Okay. And are there regular non-employee healthcare workers coming to the house, like on a daily basis or anything?
I'm sorry, non-employee workers?
Yeah, like, in other words, an outside nurse or physical therapist or something who comes for the residents?
Every now and then, once they leave the hospital and they will go to a rehab. Sometimes with their insurance, they will come through and finish the treatment. And usually that's a week or two.
Okay, okay. Let's see, and I think I just want to clarify, currently you have two employees plus you for a total of three. But you, I believe, said you'd probably go to four employees, a total of four, three employees plus you with the additional three people. And just, still just one at night, but somebody there during the day to help.
Well, just a reliever. You know, now you have a, you just don't know what the level of care will come in sometimes. And that depends on, you know, how many staff that you would need. But in a personal care home, they have to be walking most of the time. If they are in a wheelchair, they have to be able to propel their wheelchair. They have to be able to get in and out of the wheelchair themselves. I hardly ever take a wheelchair person just for that. So that being said, if they're all walking around and they do not need help, then they can get in and out by themselves.
Kind of skipping through my notes, you gave some of this in the presentation, so I'm not going to re-ask the questions. I just want to get some things on there.
I have time. I've been here all morning.
Let's see, you said you've operated at this location for eight years with three people, but you had two, in another location, you started ten years ago. So you have a total of ten years' experience during this.
I was in Clayton County ten years ago.
Okay, so I think that that answers those questions.
Let me jump in here, Ms. Rogan. You mentioned you, a lot of your patients are, have dementia, Alzheimer's, that sort of thing. Tell me about your security. What do you have to keep them from wandering?
Again, I take low level of Alzheimer's and dementia. But I do have an alarm on each door that opens up.
So you've covered that.
And I am fenced in.
Okay, okay.
And they have to sleep at night, whether they're dementia, Alzheimer's, or any mental illness, they have to sleep at night.
Ever had any problems with those folks?
I haven't, and I have not had the wanderers. I don't really take those. You know, I don't.
Okay. Rock, you can just nod from where you're sitting. Our fire, one of our fire marshals is sitting in the audience here. She gonna, if she goes to six, is she going to have to have sprinklers? She gonna, if she goes to six, is she going to have to have sprinklers? Okay, you're aware of that, I assume. And that's an expense, and you're aware of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So that's why in the beginning, I, I wanted a lot of residents. And then once I got to doing my homework, I realized this is not going to work.
Someone mentioned a ramp that, that, or some steps that might be converted to a ramp. Is there any, do you have, you mentioned it, but you didn't give any discussion. Do you have plans for adding a ramp so that people can access the backyard?
Well, yes, I will have to do my plans all over again to accommodate the fire department and accommodate my, um, the city of Atlanta.
Okay, so you're aware, you're aware that that's probably going to be required as well?
Yes, the sprinkler system and ramps, yes.
Okay, and the garage should be, as someone said, utilized for vehicle parking only, not for future growth to enclose and make another apartment there?
Oh, no.
You okay with that, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have comments?
Just, just one other question. When you raised the issue of security, do you, do any of your residents require drugs? In, you know, for health issues? Do you, do you distribute medications, I would say?
Oh, yeah.
Drugs? No, I know, I used the wrong term, sorry.
You're going to get me really kicked out. Yeah, we have drugs, we do.
Medications.
Marijuana sticks and gummy bears, okay? Yes, we do all the meds.
All the meds, right.
That's okay. The state will allow them to distribute their own medication if they would like to do that. But in most cases, that's why they're in a personal care home. So that being said, I do it, I do all the medication myself.
So your staff is trained to, to handle things like that?
Medication?
Distribute, distribute the medications properly? See, they take it on time?
Oh, yes, uh-huh, and we have to, we do a checklist every day. You know, because when the state comes in, they have to see what meds they're on, what time they took it, who signed off on it, and who did not. So, yeah.
We're asking a lot of nosy questions.
Oh, no, trust me, I've been in this hot seat before.
Health and welfare of people with dementia, so we want to be careful.
Right, and when you do it so long, you even, you know that you have some of them that are addicted to the pills. So maybe Ms. Powell, you might, might have been going there. They do have an addiction with the pills, and sometimes we have to sit there and make sure they're swallowing them.
Okay, let it go, let's let it go, okay.
Okay.
We've gone enough there. Anybody else? Skip?
Yeah, just going along with that discussion. That's a beautiful tree in the front of your house. It just begs for a tire swing, but that's a different deal.
Okay.
I, just to, to help clarify.
I know that I need to do some cleanup, which I can only do so much. But it's just so many trees out there, so many trees. And with this, and if this, if my poles go through, I could definitely afford some more flowers and make it look a lot neater, that's for sure.
So, you know, my, my question really is the size of the addition. It looks to me like it's something less than five hundred square feet.
It's going to need to be between, the, the plans that we last, the first set of plans we received, not the last, which was much larger. The first set was seven-hundred-and-two square feet, but it looks like it's going to have to be at least five-hundred-and-fifty square feet so that we get it big enough to accommodate six people. So it's, I was going to say somewhere between five-fifty and seven-hundred-and-two so that we don't get too large.
And, and then the, you're currently authorized to have, or are permitted to have four?
Three.
Okay, the, the staff, I mess with wrong.
After, after three, that's when the sprinkler alarm is implemented.
Right, okay, that was the point I was going to make.
And all the AD.
Okay, good. That was the point I was going to make. Good, I'm happy.
Anybody else have comments? Gaunt, you want to sum it up for us?
You can go ahead and have a seat.
Okay, thank you, Don, so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I guess I'll sum it up. I wanted to note that, that staff did recommend denial of this. And, you know, of course, that was at the higher nine-person, person number, which I think, you know, there were a lot of reasons that that wouldn't work well. If you were to add a very large addition to this property, it would take on an institutional look, and then you need to add parking, which would make it look less like a residential. I think at that point, you would be impacting neighbors' property values and that. You know, it's not uncommon in this area to have somebody put a five-hundred-square-foot addition on, onto a house, and it still looks and feels like a house in a single-family neighborhood. And at that size, I think we can still just use the existing driveway and carport, you know, for parking and not make, you know, a parking lot back there to accommodate, you know, parking and things like that. So I think it, it really changes the, the look and feel of what we're talking about from what was initially asked for. And this is an area, you know, I kind of, it's unclear to me whether this house is in a platted subdivision or not. It's on a very busy road, Clay Road. But I pulled up the legal description on the deed, and usually when you're a platted subdivision, the description's about a paragraph. You know, and it, it references the subdivision plat, lot number, things like that. This one is an entire eight-and-a-half-by-eleven page with, you know, go so many degrees this way, so many feet, and, you know, the meets and bounds kind of thing. And there are references to subdivision plats, but it sounds like it may be adjoining to one. And this house was built earlier than anything else on the street. So I think maybe this house sat on Clay Road and the subdivision was put behind it a few years after this house was built. And that's usually one thing we look at is whether it's in a planted subdivision or not. The house directly across Golden Circle is actually the parsonage for the church. So that's partly why there's so much land, and you can see the connection and driveway and, and things like that. So that's, that's a little bit different, gives it a little different feel. South Cobb High School's down the road a little bit. So I think this is a little bit different than some of the other land use permits that we've looked at recently, which were right in the middle of a planted subdivision with, you know, lots of neighbors here opposed, you know, because at their current level, they were already creating issues for the neighbors. What I've heard from is the one direct neighbor who didn't mention any issues. And I believe I talked to, I'm going to guess, mother and brother there, and they didn't mention any issues, just, just a concern about what was, you know, planned. At our community meeting, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, if you go more than six, we lose the neighborhood feel. And also, the addition would make it feel too institutional. So I planned to, to, to put some limitations around that. There's also talk about just needing some landscaping in the yard and that to make it look better and help improve the neighborhood, especially since this is a corner property entering the neighborhood. So with that, I'll go ahead and, and, and make a motion. One thing I did, I'm going to recommend approval for twelve months, but one thing I want to say is that the permit wouldn't start until a certificate of occupancy was gained for the addition. And then it would run twelve months from there. But if they don't get a certificate within twelve months, then this permit expires. So we don't want it just sitting out there forever if they don't make the addition for some reason. So with that, I, I make a motion that we recommend approval of LUP seven for twelve months, subject to all the following. Maximum of six residents. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The land use permit will not be effective until a certificate of occupancy is obtained for an addition to the house of not less than five-hundred-and-fifty square feet nor more than seven-hundred-and-two square feet. The twelve-month period will begin at the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. If this CO has not been issued within twelve months of the Board of Commissioners' final decision on this permit, the permit shall expire and no longer be valid. The district commissioner to approve final elevation exterior siding material and color of the addition. Landscaping to, to be provided for beautification of the property. Landscaping to include robust landscaping beds around the house, including front and rear with shrubs and other landscaping. Landscape plan to be submitted for final approval by the county arborist and district commissioner. The property grounds are to be kept neat, maintained, and free of debris. Dead plants or trees to be replaced within ninety days. Parking to be, to be provided on the existing driveway and carport. No on-street parking allowed by residents, employees, or guests. If additional parking is needed, a parking plan must be submitted for approval by the zoning division manager and district commissioner. And any exits from the addition to have ramps and not stouts. And that's my motion.
Uh, for discussion?
Yeah, I guess we could add it to the, well, let's see, we did. Let me ask the opposition. Well, sort of. Maybe we should just leave it on the regular agenda since we did have two people here.
Yeah, let's do that. Carport, carport to be used for vehicle parking only, can we add that?
I, I had, yes, let's add that.
You didn't say it that way, but if you could, that was a request from one of the.
Let's add that, the carport to be used for vehicle parking only.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, second okay with that addition? Okay, any other changes?
Yeah, yeah, I, I have a question. You said any exits on the addition need to have ramps or just one? Is it a requirement for all exits to have a ramp?
Well, I, my guess is only exits are putting in are ones that would be required.
Okay, okay.
So.
Okay, all right, anything else? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second and an amend, and an amendment added, which the second is okay with, so let's go ahead and call for the vote. So that is approved five-zero. Okay, good luck, Ms. Rogan. Do a nice job for us. That the last case, John? Okay, that's it, folks. Appreciate you coming. We do have a couple of things to do. We have some minutes to approve from April twelfth and April twenty-fourth. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, as presented, second from Skip. All in favor of approving the minutes? Okay, minutes accepted. Madam Plurk, thank you very much, folks.